Good evening, this meeting will now come to order. And Bonita, do you want to call the roll? Ms. Gaynor.
Here.
Mr. Kadama.
Here.
Mrs. Morella.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Present.
Mr. Brockway.
Here.
Ms. Mandia.
Here.
Can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for coming. I'm going to call people for public comment as they've signed in on the sign and sheet, and I'm going to ask people with a couple comments to please come up and speak to the microphone when they give their comment, please. And the first one would be Julie Loeb coming up.
Hi, good evening. Julie Loeb, Pfizer 5 York Road, and I'm a Blight Park parent and PTA board member charger. A couple of things, I'm going to limit what I have because I only have five minutes tops. I'm going to make this brief and other people can speak on other topics. First of all, on the school calendar, I think the biggest thing I have, and just a matter of 20 minutes after school today, I already got almost a page of signatures that we would like to start school Monday, August 25th or later. We are getting out almost a week later if there's no more snow. We're going to be starting a week earlier, and I know people, I've been going to these meetings for seven years, I know people want to be like the high school, but this is Riverside, and I know there's 100 some letters usually may be received, but there are a lot of parents who do want the time with their kids and want the family time, and whose husbands even only get off around certain holidays. So you really take a very valuable family time for educational experiences and things that are important to a family to be well-rounded. I really like the calendar in that I've asked for this for three years, and you finally gave us off the day after Easter even, because for those that have a very busy Easter Sunday evening, I'm in charge sometimes six hours a day as a superintendent and secretary, and I appreciate that you guys have finally given the kids that time off. I think a lot of people, you'll hear from Blight Park parents especially on Halloween, that I think if you're going to make it a half-day, maybe you can make the institute day in the morning, and then the afternoon, let there be school, let the kids come and have their costumes, have their parade, have their healthy snack, have the play that's put on by parents, because they can't go trick-or-treat until three or four o'clock, and a school would be a safe place, at least they are being somewhere in a safe haven. Yes, there might not be a lot of teaching going on, but is there teaching going on the day before Christmas vacation, or a day before spring break, when they're thinking about Christmas, or where they're going to go for spring break, or whatever else? Changing topics, I do this every year at this time, for staff reappointments, I think, speaking for Blight Park, we're happy with the people we have there. So for those that are on an annual contract, when you go into your closed session, I urge you to reappoint those people that are up for their annual contract. I think the support staff have done a great job, even for Mrs. Bassing, who's part-time, or Ms. Hulrich, who's a new fourth grade teacher, people are thrilled with them. So I would like you to see what you can do for even those part-time positions, or if there's not some from Ms. Hulrich, see what can be done, because we are happy with everybody at the school. Another thing as a PTA board member has brought up to me, I've been here to the meetings, and I've tried to relate what I've learned from you guys, even at Common Core here last week, is a lot of people are concerned about the Thursday early start. Is there going to be a dollar per day charge every week for these parents? Is there going to be extra adult serbs, so you don't have 100 students being dropped off at, say, 8:15, and there's only three young adults in the YMCA? So where's the safety and the security for those parents? I stay home and stuff, but speaking for those that have approached me as a PTA board member, I told them they can email you, but something that I know you've talked about a little bit, but is there going to be a charge? I know Dr. Lewis has looked at YMCA being here, but how many people are going to be there to supervise the children? Is there going to be a month-to-month contract they sign, or pay on a monthly basis? Because you do want to have enough student, adult ratio there for safety and security. And then just to reiterate, when you do come up with the interview committee, because I've been an educator for over 15 years, I would like that opportunity on the principal committee for Blight Park, and to be one of those parents with my experience to help the board and Blight Park have a principal that they would like to replace Mr. Clabon. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie. Next on our public comment would be Mary Camperta.
Hi, my name is Mary Camperta. I'm at 2925 Lincoln in North Riverside. I have a son at Hauser, and I'm here to talk about the special education portion of tonight's comments, and I know we're going to start working on prioritizing special education, and I feel supporting our staff, our teachers, and our peer professionals, and educating our staff, peer professionals is probably our highest priority at this point, so that our students have, with special needs, have high rigor and high standards, and are held accountable for their grades. And this kind of backs on the education committee meeting, excuse me, this is an article by Barbara Blackburn and Bradley Whitzel, who wrote a book called Rigor for Students with Special Needs, and one of their things they said, that students who are labeled disabled, learning disabled or at risk, are not incapable of learning or responding to high expectations. In fact, most students with learning disabilities have average to above-average intelligence. Their success in school is not hindered by a lack of ability, but their achievement may be limited if teachers fail to select the appropriate teaching strategies and motivational tools to challenge them appropriately. And they say 50% of students receiving special education have learning disabilities, and the effort to serve this large population have produced a broad base of research and strategies we can use to help students learn at higher levels. And this is based on the Common Core standards, and that they address students that they should know and be able to do, but not just how to, the Common Core standards address what students should know and be able to do, but not how to teach specific standards. It's left up to the teachers to pair instructional rigor with the Common Core curriculum. And so her book addresses that each student is expected to learn at high levels, each student is supported so he or she can learn at high levels, and each student demonstrates learning at high levels. And basically, she says that part of the importance is the scaffolding of helping students with the support, and that if we don't support our students, then they cannot be taught at such high levels. And with the Common Core curriculum, scaffolding is important, modeling for students is important, graphic organizers are important, and helping our teachers to have these resources, teach them how to use these resources, and give our peer professionals the support so that our teachers have these resources for our students, so that they can be held up to the high standards that we want them to be held up to.
Thank you, Mary. Next, Janine Gladys.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Janine Gladys, and I'm a Hauser parent. I live at 253 Blooming Bank Road, Riverside. I am dovetailing on Mary Camperta's public comment, and I am speaking to special education. The ISBE and its public forum presentations to schools during their focused monitoring onsite visits has highlighted the positive outcomes of general education placement for spec ed students. We believe that the increased performance of spec ed students is a direct result of inclusion. When students are exposed to the essential curriculum and participate in classroom instruction with their appropriate, age-appropriate peers, they meet and exceed our expectations. That's from the Congressional Briefing on Inclusive Education. There is a growing body of scientific evidence suggesting that integrated service models for students with disabilities, and that's all disabilities, enhance educational outcomes for all students. But in order for inclusion to be successful, it must be based upon scientific evidence. It implies a professional and parental development, and a design which brings useful supports and services into the classroom at the very beginning of instruction, and not retrofitted in after. Successful inclusion necessitates collaboration between everyone, between administrators, general education teachers, special education teachers, service providers, and the board, and I hope to be a part of that collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Next, Mikey Knox?
No.
Oh, Alice, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Alice Enoch, and I'm a Hollywood School parent. But I am also a kindergarten through eighth grade certified teacher. I understand that there are processes, procedures, test scores that need to get done. I am speaking as a parent and for all those parents who advocate for their children, and the advocate will always step on toes, will always push, and will always insist. We do not intend to be difficult or hard to work with, but as a parent, it is our job to make sure our children's needs are being met. If you fail to make a call, provide services, allow him or her to be under-challenged, ignore his or her IEP, or do him or her any kind of educational injustice, it's a parent's job to draw attention to it and make it right. If you feel inconvenienced, or it's not within your budget, it is not our intentions to cause problems. But the issue is not how you feel, the issue is the children who need the educational resources to succeed and to become lifelong learners. Teachers and administrators, you should embrace every opportunity to do what's best for the children entrusted to you. You should be open to learning new ideas and methods, and you should be on the side of education, regardless whether it's general ed or special ed. You should be advocating for inclusion, not more self-contained classrooms. I also want to add, changing the subject, but I want to add that I do not agree with the one, I do not want or agree with the one-hour late start next school year. I do agree that the staff needs more collaboration time, but I think it would be better if it were a one-hour early release time. I know my children perform much better in the morning than they do in the afternoon. For the parents who work, it would be easier to add one hour to childcare in the afternoon than to try to find childcare for one hour in the morning. And also, on the calendar, I saw that there's a half-day scheduled for Halloween. I have emailed you also, but I want to stress that if you expect the kids to perform, you need to give them that time, the Halloween, the Christmas, Valentine's party. I know it seems like, you know, you might think it's frivolous, but to them, it is huge. Halloween and Christmas are huge for them. If they're not going to have their Halloween parade or party, and they're going to be going home, then they're, like the other moms said, they're going to be sitting around for hours before they can go trick-or-treating. This is a perfect opportunity for them to learn, not learn, but this is a perfect opportunity for them to practice their social skills. It's not just about having a party, it's about them actually interacting with their friends in, like I call, a safe environment. That gives them the chance just to be in a controlled, but not a controlled setting. I know that when they're working on projects in the classroom, that's a controlled setting. So yes, they're interacting with their peers, but with the Halloween party, that's interacting in a not-controlled, but yet safe environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Alice. Jelsoft. Is this on?
It's recording. It's not amplifying.
Oh, see? Okay.
We can hear you.
Okay, good evening, and I just want to take a quick poll amongst you to see if you know this or not, it's no judgmental thing, but for my own curiosity, how many of you know that the nurses' office that services Hauser and Central is inaccessible to anyone with a mobility issue? Meaning, it could be somebody in a wheelchair, could be somebody with crutches, a back brace, a brace on their legs? How many of you know that it's currently not accessible? Just give me a show of hands.
I know because you told me.
Yeah, I was going to say.
We know it now.
So I'm assuming then, none of you know that it's accessible, right? Okay, so then, you guys really need to look at that immediately. It should be a file that says, "Hot burning, you need to look at that right away," because it's a liability issue, number one. Number two, there's a lot of kids you're not servicing the right way, 100%. I saw, actually, I took a tour of Hauser the other day, and I saw a girl with crutches, and there was two girls helping her, and I was like, geez, how is this girl going to make it down to the nurses' office? So it's that type of situation, but this is a subject you need to take care of immediately on your plate. So I just wanted to let you know that.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Os.
Yes.
Point of privilege, I'd like to also at least make a public, put out a public thank you to a certain group of individuals. I know we're going to be talking about the crossing guards soon, but I do want to acknowledge at least how grateful I am for the crossing guards, especially considering the extreme weather conditions that we had, that they're out there, that they're doing their jobs, and that's not just the crossing guards, but, you know, the teachers that are out there, student patrols that are out there. I think it's commendable, they are doing a commendable job considering the conditions.
Thank you, it's good to be reminded of that. All right.
I'm so sorry, Jess. On the way here, I noticed that all the handicap spots, there was piles of snow there. This is not good, need to remove the snow from there. You're talking about safety spots.
Thank you.
Need to maintain those spots.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Bobna, do you want to go through the FOIA requests? I think there's some today.
Just a second, I'm sorry.
I hear them right here.
Yes, we received a FOIA request for the resignation agreement of our technology director, and we have provided that documentation to Mr. Skolnick.
All right. Anything for the last line? Okay. All right. All right, thank you, Bobna. I would also like just to make an announcement, that next month's regular board meeting, our regularly scheduled District 96 policy and regular business meeting, which was originally scheduled for Tuesday, March 18th, has been rescheduled for Wednesday, March 19th, so just make a note of that. And also the policy committee as well, the policy committee will be at 6:00 PM, and again, the same time, 7:30 for the business meeting. And I do understand that there is an event here at the school that day, some, the Spring musical. So parking is going to be a little bit difficult, but I just did want to let you know that that is the day we've chosen to reschedule. Anyway, and then just a note for our board members, and I see that we do already have a notification by the microphones, but I've been asked just to ask people, don't cover them up. We sound so much better on TV, and I was an early offender of just putting papers on it, but anyway, I've been asked to announce that. So anyway, thank you. All right. Our next agenda item would be presentations, a presentation from Align iCloud.
Yeah, you know, I'll tell you a floor. As part of our ongoing discussion about technology and developing better infrastructure for our faculty, staff, students, you name it, we've been going down the path of trying to find the most cost-effective solution to give our students, and one of the options we are seriously considering is a co-op called Align iCloud, and many members of the community have asked that we reach out to Align iCloud, and in particular, Chris McCarthy was the one who brought the idea to me, and through phone calls and emails, we've had the privilege to bring both Jim Peterson and, is it Bernie Axe?
Ach.
Ach. If it's long, I usually butcher it. The short one, I didn't think I'd have that much of a problem, but they're here tonight to give us an overview of the services they provide, and what they can do for us. And remember, from our discussion, I think our biggest, you know, pain points that we're looking at is trying to boost internet speed, hosting services off-site, addressing our email situation, a help desk situation, Active Directory, and disaster and backup. So without any further ado, Jim Peterson with Align iCloud.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jim Peterson, I'm from the Bloomington School District, so I've been there about 15 years. I'm a former teacher, and typical in school districts, what happens is, you know a little bit about technology, next thing you know, you're the technology director. So that started off, and when I was a little small school district down south, and I kind of moved up to Urbana, and then after a couple of years there, I ended up being in Bloomington. I've been there for 15 years. And we've had a lot of success in Bloomington, because we were able to have some folks that really thought forward-thinking about being able to bring technology together, build applications on top of it. Integration was a big thing, consolidation of resources and those kind of things, taking our budgets from different places, and all focused on an idea that we could do more with our technology and share that across. Well, that kind of same thing was very popular amongst a lot of my peers that earns other 860-some school districts around the state. And about, it was about 10 years ago, we started getting together and started saying, there's got to be a better way. We can't all continue to build up big data centers all the time, and continue to do everything ourselves. It's just too expensive. And more and more, our curriculum folks will go back out to conferences, and they come back with more technologies, and we'd have to stand them up, or we'd do one-to-one initiatives, and we'd have to be able to figure out ways to be able to support all these things. And the expansion of our services and what we needed to do at our school district became really, really expensive. And I know that personally, and so what we did is, we started talking, how can we do this together? We tried other little things before with Springfield School District, and Decalb, and down south in Carbondale, and we'd share servers and things like that, but that really didn't work, it didn't save us very much money. So we ended up building some ideas about four or five years ago, where we actually said, we want to stand up some data centers in our school districts, because we know that that's a low-cost pace to be able to put them, because we already have those, we own them, right? So we put one way up in the north of Decalb, we put one right in the middle in Bloomington, and we put one way down south in Carbondale. And then we connected them with high-speed networks, and we said, we're going to buy high-end equipment, and make sure that we have really good storage, really good compute, and really good networking resources, so that we can actually serve out certain things that school districts can then share, buy in at cost, and at scale, and at low cost, and then be able to share that out, because that makes a lot more sense. So that's basically how we became Align iCloud. We actually, we're kind of like, if you ever had a special education co-op, I don't know if Riverside's in a special education, okay, it's the same thing, we're just, we're a technology co-op. It's under the same state law, it just happens that we have four districts that make up those inter-agency agreements between our boards, and then we offer services now to hundreds of school districts across seven states. So we actually can provide all these different services, and I'm going to go through a little bit about what those services are. Bernie is also here, if you don't mind, if you don't mind. Bernie's also here today, because as you can imagine, we start doing these things, we build a lot of trust with school districts, and they're starting to get some really good services about everything that they're trying to do. It starts to build up, and all of a sudden, the state starts seeing, hey, these guys can deliver some certain things. We also have a really major player in our state at the National Center for Supercomputing Applications, they're a national player, they build huge supercomputers and things like that. But that ability to bring us together, to be able to answer some of the big states' data problems, and identity problems, and things we're going to talk about in a minute, is why Bernie and I are both here, because we are also presenting down to a large group in Bloomington today, too. So by the way, we are non, we're total nonprofit, obviously, we're just school districts, we can't make money, so we turn around exactly what we do. We have a governance solution with that elected governing board, or governing board that we have, that's made up of learning technology center folks, state board of education folks, big school districts, small school districts, private schools, everybody's in board, anybody that becomes a member and pays the low-end cost to be able to become a member of Align iCloud, actually can become on that board and help us advise and drive the direction. But what we have basically is 860-plus school districts, I think you guys know that, and everybody's having various, we all have to do the same thing. We all have to do student information systems, IEP applications, communication systems, video surveillance, transportation, you name it. I have over 100 different applications that I have to provide for my own school district. But everybody's having the varying levels of implementation and success, and I think we see, I see that. I've talked to Matt, I've talked to some of your other folks about where you're at with different things, and we just want to be able to make sure that we can help out with our shared community, and show you some of these offerings that we have, and you may dip your toe in the water and decide you want to try out some of these things, or you may not at all, but I think that once you go down that path, and you start seeing some of the things we can do and work together as other school districts, it's a very valuable thing. Staffing challenges are a big problem, we find that all over the state. It's hard to get good technology folks that districts can pay, you know, that's really it, because when it comes down to getting really high-end technology people, that's why we try to bring in the things that cost a lot, like high-end load balancing, and network services, and virtualization, and big, huge stacks of objects stored with eight, managing eight petabytes in a tiered solution, that becomes obviously real high-end technical kinds of guys that we want to be able to bring in. And that's why we try to center those, but still keep all that, those folks that are in the buildings and the districts, back to where they can actually make a good impact on their one-to-one programs, and supporting their local networks, supporting their local computing infrastructure that you still have to have to some degree. And then year-to-year funding, we understand that that's a big problem with some of the things that gone, every year, there's a little bit of a challenge, because some school districts have problems with being able to do these kind of things, and one of the things we try to do in Align iCloud is make sure that people can try out what we do for as long as they need. We really do do that, and at some point, we actually have to cover our costs, but we want people to become comfortable with it and understand that we're not here to, basically, we're not business, our job is to be able to provide solutions. We also received a lot of money from the state and the federal government in order to build out what we've done. ERA funds, over $5 million, and state funds, right now, we're engaged in a pretty big project called the Illinois Shared Learning Environment, to build out some core services as well. So we actually turned that back in. So basically, we make a possible for districts to rely on operating expenditures instead of big capital expenditures. I know, Matt just walked me around, I saw you got a bunch of old Mac servers, you need to replace them. It's a time, this is a time where you can consider and think about, maybe you want to move to a virtual environment for certain kinds of services that you want to provide. Or what we do, sometimes we have school districts come to us and say, hey, we want to move our Exchange server, our mail server, the Windows mail server, we want to move it to the Align iCloud. And what do we do? We tell them, say, well, have you ever considered maybe moving it to Google? Because Google might be a good option for you guys in order to be able to do that. Our job is, our job is to find the best fit for them. They may not be comfortable with that, but our job is to be able to help out of school districts and be able to share that out. Access to state-of-the-art computing, storage, and network resources, I could go into depth with that, I have some other people that can even go into further depth, Bernie could probably too, but basically, we want, our intent is to be able to utilize resources efficiently with no overhead, or little overhead, and expense, that's our basic goal. So, one of the big things that we do, this is kind of out of order, because I think I have a slide, Bernie, can you go through a couple slides real quick? Oh, this, I'll talk about this one. This is one of the processes that we do right now. School districts are trying to be able to figure out their data, their data problems they have. You may have data in a lot of different sources, your student information system, your IP things, these are things that Bernie and I are working on now, and we actually have implemented in the 35 race atop school districts in Illinois, and we have 33 of them done, where we actually take data from different sources in their school district, and bring it into a localized ODS in the Align iCloud, so that we can then be able to give them the ability to run reports, be able to see if they have errors in their data, validation rules, and things like that. That's very important when you're reporting the state, and I know, I don't know who does that in this district, but I'm sure they would also agree that that's a very valuable service. So we're building that out for a bigger picture kind of thing, but this is really important for us as well. Go ahead, go. It does error reporting, the messages are sent back to your original school district, you guys are the source of record, that's how we see everything. This is empowering districts to own their own data, to make their decisions locally, and then be able to make sure that they can use services that help them clean their data and keep it the ultimate source in check. Go ahead. You know what? I think we missed a slide that was about services itself. Do you mind just seeing if you can get to that one, and we can talk about those services? It should be infrastructure, disaster recovery, and this one's a little bit too much for this right now. I'm sorry, guys, I have these in order, we just kind of drove up a little bit late, so I'll talk about this at some point if we want to, it's more instructional side, of things we're building right now, like learning maps, and dashboards, and those kind of things. Go back, go another one, Bernie, I think I'm missing it. One more? Maybe? Are we? Okay. The core services that we do, for some reason, it's not on our analysis, delete it, this is how we start, we do disaster recovery. And obviously, that's very important to school districts, it's one of the easiest ones for us to be able to do. us to be able to do, just for, be able, school districts to get their data offsite. It's a very simple process. We have a little client piece of software that you put on the server that you want to be able to back up, and then it allows you to be able to put it up in the Decalb data center, the Bloomington data center, or the one down south, or put it on all three if you want. You know, it's just one of those services. What we do is, as part of our membership, I gave you the brochure, I think, Michael, and you could pass it around to other folks. There's a certain amount of DR that just comes with this membership, and I think your district's a $500 annual membership for the co-op. And after that, what you do is, you pay for what you use. So, however much storage you use, basically, that's how the process works. Any questions about the DR? I think it's just one of those things that most people dip their toe in the water, because it's not a bad thing to be able to have your data backed up somewhere to some other trusted school district. I think that's kind of what we're trying to be able to push. The next thing we do is what's called infrastructure as a service. And infrastructure as a service is basically virtual servers. Just like you have downstairs in your closet there, you have all kinds of servers that you're standing up that run different kinds of applications. I don't know what all those different applications are, but we have a virtual environment where we can stand those up. It makes it look like it's yours in your district. Doesn't even look, it's just offsite. And you manage the entire operation. You still manage the server, you still manage the applications, you still do the updates and everything that you do, but we just give you a place for very, very low cost. We find a lot of school districts are doing that because as they're retiring old equipment, because their Skyward server dies, or their PowerSchool, I'm not sure what you guys, I forgot which one you run, PowerSchool. We run a lot of PowerSchool. And because there's a lot of hosting providers out there that will do PowerSchool hosting, we just basically give them dumb virtual servers, and then they're able to be able to install that, so the people who are still doing that kind of work have a place to be able to do it. We do snapshots on a continual basis, make sure we have, you know, backed up, that's all part of the process and everything like that. And then, again, it's based upon what kind of CPUs you use, how much drive space you use, that's really what it comes down to. And again, we turn around exactly what our cost is. The next thing we have is called software as a service. And software as a service is more, we take a more active role in that. And what we did is, we build these based upon work groups that we do around the state. So, we work with groups of teachers who are looking for, you know, lecture capture software. That's big. So, what we did is, we bought an entire statewide license for Camtasia relay server, so that we could actually host that, so that when they're using their MacBooks or whatever they're doing, or their iPads, they can basically have a place for, be able to capture that information, relay it out to video servers, and be able to store those kind of things. That's what we focused on there. We own Adobe Connect licensing for all our membership, so that if people need virtual environments to hold a meeting or whatever, they can be able to share that, and that's that district's own, they can do what they want with it, they can get additional rooms if they want to, because that's one of the things we like to focus on. Some of the things that I want to talk about now are in that realm. There is one more part on that slide, sorry. Because we're school districts, every time we roll something out, what do you do? You have professional development, right? So, we've been working with the University of Illinois College of Education for the last 15 years on this. Every time we roll out a technology, we have training for four different groups of people. Technology directors, because they're the folks who are basically gonna implement it and kind of have to know the ins and outs of it. We have it for administrators, because they need to know about this stuff. You know, they need to know what their buildings are using, what toolsets are out there, what they can look at their teachers and say, you know, when they're doing evaluations or whatever, say, "Have you taken advantage of this, or have you done this?" That's what we want to be able to continue to do. And then we have teacher training. That's basically focused with a lot of time to be able to really get into the technology, be able to have time to develop. We really believe in that model, because it works really well. And then, of course, we have the last one, which is our office staff. Believe it or not, our office staff are a huge part of everything that we do in technology, because PowerSchool or some of these other applications, they're distributed. And it's important for them to know their role in the whole organization. As we move data, they're entering data, they're dealing with sniffing noses and, you know, throwing up, things like that. But at the same time, they also have to put in information all the time. We need to have them as part of that process and assist in the building and moving things along. So, we tie all that together, and those are our big core services. Over the last couple of years, we've been involved in a project with the state of Illinois called the Illinois Shared Learning Environment. Has anyone heard of that? Okay. It's a, it's a project that's basically funded by the DCEO, Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. We are one of the four partners within that project. And in that project, we have been commissioned, it was originally Bernie was commissioned, but Bernie and I have decided we would work together as Illini Cloud and NCSA to build these things out, and we're focused on the three big things. Data services, we call them our three pillars of, you know, education service. Data services, which is what we talked about, being able to bring in data from multiple systems, bring it into a centralized operational data store, and then make it available to different vendors, you know? People who do Pearson Success Net or ThinkGator, I'm trying to think of some other, there's millions of different vendors out there, right? So, that's what our role is, to be able to define that piece of it. What's that? Up to and including the state board. We even have contracts now to automate SIS, the SIS state, where everybody has to report all their student, their attendance and their, all the kinds of information. They change it all the time, and it stays away, increases the burden on all of us, I get it. So, we said, "We need to automate that, make it easier for school districts, reduce that burden," and we added that part to this. Identity services. Now, this really is Bernie's expertise, and, but I'm just gonna kind of explain it, and when we need to get into details, he's our expert. Basically, what it is, is if you go into a lot of school districts that have active directories or have directory services, like mine and a lot of the districts in the state, you, we basically auto-generate accounts for kids and teachers and staff and everything. Soon as they come into our district, they're automatically logging in, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, soon as they get in, a kid walks into our building, the secretary's putting in information, automatically, we're passing that information of data to our library system, so they can check out a book, our lunch system, so they can eat lunch that day, our assessment program, so they can actually take a reading assessment, and those kind of things, and being able to gather all those things. We've even built applications on top of that, so our teachers could go in with their role in the organization and really, then look down at every little piece of data about their kids in their class, not going through multiple times of things, but we're talking everything from IEPs for all kids, information about their, all their demographics, whether they have, you know, they're allergic to some other kind of thing, all their local assessments, not just state assessments, but formative assessments, everything from DIBELS all the way up to, you know, map assessments and other kind of things that you do. And we built that entire process out within our data side. Our identity side, because people log in and we want to be able to utilize that identity, is we're basically building a federated identity system in Illinois that's basically part of a larger ecosystem of federated identity that universities have been using for years. And they're helping us out to make this basically a way that will pass those credentials, so that you can, first thing that people like is single sign-on. If you have a lot of applications that live out in the cloud, your teachers probably complain all the time about they have to sign into multiple applications, whatever it might be. This is what does, this fixes that. It allows those vendors to be able to take, or they can take advantage of the SAM authentication and be able to pass the tokens from your local school district on. And when you get to a directory system where you're building up with kids' accounts, that same information can be also be utilized for kids. And you guys are a complete authority of that. That's the way we're building it. So, school districts, whoever the curriculum person is, or whomever that is, they're the ones that are basically authenticating these applications, can access that, or we can share with these applications, whether it be Google, or whether it be Pearson, or whether it be anybody. That's what this is about. The last thing is called presentation services. We don't call it portal, because people have a whole messed-up view of what a portal is, but basically, it's a presentation layer, because what we're building right now, and we demonstrated it again today, is this ability of bringing different people who are developing applications within Illinois 4K-12, using the data and identity that we talked about, and being able to bring it into one place, so that it has the district's look and feel. Riverside's look and feel on colors and everything like that, and that, when they start, when their administrators go in and they say, "We want these kind of applications," it shows up to the people in our organization based on their role. You know, the teachers and the kids are gonna have this, the administrator's gonna be able to have this. That's what we are building for I. So, we are, right now, in the implementation stage, and that's why Bernie and I wanted to share a little bit about this, with the 35 race to top school districts. We just did the pilot rollout this week. It went well. And now, we're basically looking for the next several school districts in the race to the top, and over time, we know we're gonna have to go out to other districts, and that's why we're reaching out right now and being able to show, because there's a bigger picture that you can tie into all these things, and that's why we want to be able to share on a little bit. This tells you a little bit about this whole idea of federation of service providers and things that we're looking at in terms of a bigger picture. Basically, up in the blue area are these Google, the third-party apps that are out in the cloud. Down in the middle could be these providers that basically do, how would you explain that, Bernie? It's more, more like, like local, like local applications. And then, of course, down here is the different K-12s and how they'd be able to feed into that. So, that's exactly what it's doing, and that's what we've been building. We're interested, because we're really interested, actually, in Riverside, because you guys have a quest for that last bullet point you said, directory services. And we're really interested in being able to see whether or not that might be a candidate or something you guys might be interested in looking at. So, that's something we would love to investigate. But we do have certain things. Disaster recovery, out of the box, we already have that service. That's something we can do. You should investigate whether it's useful to use, something you want to be able to do, or whether you want to look at some other vendors. I would, I'd always do that. And then, infrastructure. When you determine what kind of applications you might want to be able to host, we can spec those kind of things out. We can work with vendors, we work with vendors all the time, because we don't do certain things. Certain things we don't do, we don't come in your building and fix your wireless. We don't come in and do a lot of local, local kinds of things in the building. We will, when you become part of Illini Cloud, though, we definitely will look at things and throw it out to our community, who will comment on those things. That's what school districts are, were able to do. We call our second opinion service. So, if you have a contract or something you want to have looked at, we're happy to look at it. If you want us to actually tell us, you want us to say, "Hey, do you do anything like that?" We can tell you what we can do it for, but we're not gonna be able to compete in every area. We're just not. So, that's kind of our big picture about what we do and what we're about. Bernie, you have one more?
He's got one more.
I don't know. Oh, yeah, this is a crazy slide. You ready? This tells everything that we're basically been building and who we've been dealing with the last couple of years. This is a pretty big project. Unfortunately, the state's not very good about advertising what they do. Bernie and I know that well. We go out and do all these wonderful things, and then it's like, it's like a hidden gem. Illinois has been doing some really cool things, and those districts right there are the 35 race to top districts that we're working with and interacting with all the time. We're ingesting their data in the Illini Cloud, we're ingesting their identity, well, not yet, but we're getting close to the identity part. And what we're doing is, we're working with partners at SIU and NIU to build out applications around certain core things. We're also, we're working with a lot of vendors to build out core things like learning maps. The idea of knowing where a student is and their progression of learning around the common core, so that they know, and we can actually light it up with real data. So, if we're using map assessments and we're looking at something specifically around phonemic awareness on a third grader, we can actually light that information up, and that's what we're building in. Bernie, I'm gonna stop talking for a second unless you want to add some of the different things, but this is a really busy slide, but if you actually break up little different parts of it, these are some of the big things that we're working on and bringing, bringing some folks to. It's kind of a natural progression for us to start, we're gonna district outside of the race to top districts, because we're about ready, and we're ready to start being able to look at these things and try them out with different folks. At the same time, we still have our core services, infrastructure and DR.
The, well, you mentioned about disaster and backup. It's one of the topics that we're looking to maybe put out for proposal. Very, very good. Is that something that, I mean, you would advise that, you know, of the six issues that we put out for quote or proposal, is that that's one that maybe we could just break off and have you guys, I guess, bid on or compete on?
Yeah, exactly. That's easy. We do it all the time. Honestly, school districts ask us, they just, we just have a simple form or, that basically fills out, and you can test it out and run it for as long as you want, in fact. Eventually, we'll say, "Hey, listen, I think three years is long enough."
So, you said it's like $500 to join the co-op?
Yeah, so I gave you, I gave you a brochure, it's based on the state's numbers, the size of the district.
I just sent that about 10 minutes ago.
Okay, sorry, guys. And I know better than to have this ready for the board packet. Unfortunately, I wasn't ready, and Michael told me, he said, "Get this in the board packet," and I was like, "I didn't get time to get it done." So, I'm very sorry about that. You guys can review that.
It's still downloading.
Sorry. Send me the board file.
But basically, we have, this is kind of funny, is when we started this, we really thought it was gonna be mostly collar, outside of the collar counties and not CPS. We weren't expecting CPS, and so, we actually built a structure that was $500, $1,000, $1,500 based upon the size, and then CPS comes along. So, you can imagine how that's gonna be painful for us, because they're obviously big, they're their own state. And so, we're, hopefully, they're not gonna want a lot of services or a lot of say and everything, but it's pretty, it's, it's good for us, too, though, because it helps us build out our services.
It sounds like CPS is not the type of district that this was designed for, because you're looking for small districts that just don't have the scale, they're looking for economies, they're looking for expertise.
You'd be surprised. Glenview, Glenview School District, wealthy school district, right? Dip their toe in the water first and DR. DR's the winner, because DR, they want to just get their data offsite. They want safety. If something happens, and you have another Harrisburg, Illinois, or some of those kind of other things, God forbid, but sooner or later, they're gonna go and get back and up operate, and they want to be able to get their stuff off at least 150 miles away. So, that's just one of the easy things for them. The next thing we found out with a place like Glenview, and I'll use them, because Brian's a friend of mine, a tech director there, and next thing you know, he's just like, he is not a technical guy, he is an instructional guy. And he just said, basically, "I need to get out of this business. I don't mind running the applications and things like that, but I don't want to run hardware and those kind of things." So, he just started throwing more, PowerSchool went up next, and as soon as IEP server, and pretty much, after a while, the only thing he's got is local DNS servers. That was pretty much it, so.
And he's able to do that, because you were saying that you still have to manage the servers.
Yeah, so we don't do that yet, we're not to that level, so we don't actually do like updates on servers for you. We give you pretty much blank virtual machines, and you can load anything you want. We will load Windows or Linux or whatever kind of things you want, your flavor of the day, but we don't actually do the ongoing updates, that's your responsibility, just the day, but we don't actually do the ongoing updates, that's your responsibility, just like it would be normally. But you don't have to worry about the hardware, you don't have to worry about the power, the cooling, all those kinds of things like that. That's exactly what we're focused on right now. We know it's going to grow, because we're watching our revenues grow and people are asking for more in terms of services. But what we've been focused on is really technology directors, people who are just looking for niche kinds of things right now, and it really worked out well. So this is the first time we're kind of...
But your friend in Glenview, he's the technology director? So, but he has enough background to do what needs to be done with regards to managing the servers?
Yeah, he has people too. It's Glenview. He has people to do different things.
Well, I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, is like, what does this district need to provide to support?
Now, I'm a big believer, my own purpose, and I've talked to some folks on the phone about this, I still believe you need a strong presence, especially for our district with a one-to-one. It's very, very important that you have technology leadership going forward that can be answered questions locally. Whether you outsource to different folks, I still think that's a very valuable thing. Because it's that immediate, being in my own district, I know that being able to go back and be there right away for teachers and having the same mission, being on the same thing, I think it's really important. That's just my own feeling, that's a district recommendation that I would do, is be able to have your own local staff for those kinds of things. And part of that is, they have to do some work, which is, you know, sometimes they have to run servers, they have to, you know, connect up the databases and things like that.
Yeah, I would only offer a comment on that is, is that if you can relieve the burden of the physical infrastructure from the local school district, that's a big offload. Okay? Because that's a lot of stuff and it's a lot of care that needs to be taken into account. The power considerations, the cooling considerations, how you man a data center, how you secure your data center, how you deal with disaster and recovery techniques and technologies and so forth. That's what a centralized data center is really taking away. Okay? It allows you to offload that somewhere else. Aligna Cloud specializes in those centralized services, just like we're talking about identity service, data services and so forth. Those are virtual structures that everyone uses, and it takes specialists to make those things happen. Data centers usually take specialists, network specialists and so forth. So that's the type of thing, you don't have to own, you can rent, okay? Or pay for incrementally in that kind of way. So that's the big difference.
And you can opt, the other thing we like to share is, we're districts, we understand you never want to be held hostage, and of course, we're never going to hold you hostage. This is your data. We see that, that's why we give you full control over your environment, the virtual environment. You can opt out, opt in anytime you want. You want to move it over to another cloud provider at any time, that's your call. We actually know that we were very, very, very competitive in pricing on virtualization and very competitive on storage. We also started building out services on top of that, I forget to tell these kinds of things, just like protected, we just keep building more services on top of it. One of the big ones is, you know Dropbox functionality and Google Drive and things like that, but a lot of that stuff that you put up there, you don't know if it's, what it's being used for, how it's being mined and those kinds of things. One of the things we started building was an application on top of our storage, so we could actually connect in with your directory structures. And so as your kids log in, their H drive becomes a place where they can save files, but they can also get to it on their phone, they get it to their devices and go anywhere they basically want to get to and be able to look at those documents. Very much the same thing, but it's in the network of districts. It doesn't go beyond us. We're K-12, that's what we're about. Basically sharing out storage that's yours, securely yours, and that's what it's all about.
At the three data centers you have, what kind of staff do you have? You know, who do we, who would we communicate with on a daily basis?
That's a great question. We are getting to a point where we have to bring in more staff. Right now, we have a centralized team of about three people that basically do everything. They're full-time Aligna Cloud, but they're all in Bloomington. But then what we do is we beg, borrow and steal from districts. That's how we had to build our capacity at the beginning. So we utilize the folks in Murfreesboro because they have a team. We utilize the folks that are in DeKalb because they have a team. And basically what we've been doing is leveraging their extra time. The other thing is, when they run their applications in Aligna Cloud and they move all their environment there, that's their district ownership. So it's basically, if they're managing stores, they're managing not just for themselves but for all kinds of their people. Really, that kind of thing, we found it really doesn't matter that much. But we're getting to a point now, and we know this, we actually are hiring additional folks that are focused especially on our core services like identity and data, so that we can continue to focus on our core services the same way we do. But basically, it's about three folks that are, that work for Aligna Cloud.
But perhaps your question was focused on, how do you ask for help if you need it? Or assistance?
Yeah.
We have a help desk, yeah, we have a help desk, like everybody does. And that's one of the recommendations I had here, because one of the things, we have a help desk. So you can fill out, you can either call, or you can fill out a form, or whatever else you might want to be able to do, and then we have people that respond to that. Again, we have a ring of folks that all work and there's a transfer of help district comes in, we're able to all be able to pool and look at it and be able to answer things. A lot of us already know about it though, shared infrastructure.
Can your help desk system also include our on-premise staff? So that if a teacher...
So we have really, really thought about that, and you guys are really pushing us to think about that harder. We didn't really want to get into the help desk world, it's just like we don't want to get into VoIP. So anybody that wants VoIP out there can have the voice or IP thing, we don't want that either. Because that's just too critical for things. But we are, we have been, so I was supposed to have another guy that runs our help desk locally come tonight, but he wasn't able to come. And that's something we do want to investigate. You know, there are services out there, other cloud services, like we would push you to, looking at SchoolDude, and I think we've mentioned that to some of the guys here. And we have written up exhaustive things about SchoolDude and the pricing and those kinds of things. Kind of expensive. I didn't even know it was that expensive. But there's other things, we can talk about being able to set up a virtual server so you guys can actually have your own instance of a help desk, that's for free. There's plenty of them out there. And then we could, you know, something we really would like to investigate, very much like the identity side.
Right. Perhaps you're also concerned with, how do I integrate my local staff into the help system that's there? And if that's the focus, then that's actually easy, because ultimately, there are some things that are managed centrally, that the help desk would be routed to the data center for resolution, but then there's going to be help desk tickets that come up that are not applicable for the data center, but there are local problems, so those tickets need to be routed to your local staff.
In my own school district, we have a help desk system that's basically custom, we'd love to trade it out someday here too. But basically, our teachers like it, because they can go there easily, it already knows who they are, it already knows information about them, because it knows their identity. And so it pre-populates with a lot of information. They type their problem in, and as soon as they type their problem in, it submits that ticket to a queue, where there's one person that serves it out to different people that solve problems. We even have externals, like maybe it's Net56 or somebody else that's going to do something on another part. You can do those kinds of things. And what happens is that entire process, that teacher gets an email every time it first has been received, when it goes to a person that's supposed to fix the ticket, when it's been added to and said, hey, we got to order some parts, you know, or whatever, or they close it. They have to, we even force that our people to go out and fix things have to put information back in, so it gives information back to the teachers. And that's really the big thing about it, is communication. But more than that, it really helps you identify where your problems are. You now know, do you have a lot of problems with smart boards? Or do you have a lot of problems with your networking or your wireless or whatever it might be? You now can give the tools for your technology staff, very limited as it is, to be able to bring back information and be able to throw it in front of you guys and say, look, I think we're going to need somebody that's going to be more focused on this, or maybe we, then you can quantify a, you know, a partial service out to different vendors that might be able to help out with that too.
One additional point on that too, is we also have a support network of birds of a feather type of community tech directors all across the state, participating in mail lists to support answering questions and that sort of thing. And Jim, you know those communities much better than I do.
And that's just something I've been doing the last 20 years, being in multiple districts, is we built communities. We built things like Tech Geeks, it's called, just folks trying to help each other out and make sure districts, but we got to get those people involved in those organizations. The Cozen folks, which they just started a new chapter here in Illinois, which is a bunch of leaders on technology direction for, it's the Consortium for School Networking, very important group to get involved in. Also the Illinois Chief Technology Officers, which is more of a collar county group of people, but I happened to be the president of a couple of years ago, so I know those folks are good people who want to be able to help. And getting in that group of districts that are trying to do things, we're at a time right now where districts do want to help each other, we just happen to come in with the infrastructure side and say, we can provide little pieces to it. Like I said, we're not going to be able to do everything, we'll work with vendors in order to be able to figure out what things fit for us and what things fit for them. And, you know, those are the kinds of things we want to be able to do. Right now, we have core services. These are the things we do right out of the box. The other things, we have to investigate and talk about. Because we are still a growing organization, and we're a nonprofit, and we're continuing to grow. We have sustainability though, that's our biggest thing. We're focused on sustainability. We are, we're a moving, growing entity that has multiple services that are funding our core operations, and that's going forward very, very well. And I can give, I think somebody asked for that, I gave you some information?
Yeah, on our last conference call, Zach asked for it, and you gave me the information I forwarded.
And I'll be able to update that every quarter. Again, there's more.
What is that?
We generate revenue in order to pay for our operations. So somebody asked for a financial statement, I just, those of you? Okay. And I just, I finally gave it to him, I'm sorry about that. I had to get it from our fiscal agent, which is Murfreesboro School District.
So the apps layer, this is not part of the core services, is something you're investigating? Things like the shared Adobe Connect, the file sharing?
Oh no, those are core services. Those kinds of things. What we're talking about right now is the app layer. Bernie, how would you explain it?
Well, there is a set of core services that are being developed under the IIL umbrella, the big project space, the big fancy slide that we have there. And there are two custom applications that are being developed in that environment. One for finding content resources to handle tagging and aligning with core, common core standards and declaring that this module does this sort of thing or that. A second application focuses on performance monitoring and the progression of students through multiple years of engagement at your institution through Northern University and what used to be IIRC or the Interactive Report Card.
Yeah, but now...
It's where you do your school group planning?
Yep.
It's basically the, you know, Harvey Smith that runs that organization up there does, has all the contracts with the state for school group, sorry to interrupt, but basically created what's called my IIRC, which is exactly what I was talking about, a dashboard, front end that drives it down to the teacher level. So when they log in, it knows their identity, guess where they get that from? And their data, guess where they get that from? And they're able to be able to see composite views, so teachers have better information at their fingertips to be able to make better decisions in the classroom. And then what Bernie's saying is, the SIU folks are linking into the OER search tools so that now you have a student with phonemic awareness problems, and you're looking for resources that are tied around that. And it basically goes out and searches those kinds of sites.
So the data and the identity, is that part of the shared learning environment? Or is that something you already have?
Those are actually being constructed, built and facilitated as core services, because quite frankly, they don't belong to any application space. They actually belong to the infrastructure layer, because that's what makes the stitching all work. That's where the linkage comes from. And those, I would say, are classified as core services. And once they're actually developed, it's a matter of maintenance. I mean, it's not something that you continually invest in, but you do have to invest in support.
Exactly. And that's what we're figuring out right now, is basically, just like we charge for DR based upon how much you use, we're just, we're trying to figure out what that cost is for data and identity going forward for additional school districts that come on board. So we're not quite ready. The state paid for the race to top school districts. I wish you were a race to top school district. Because we would have had you paid up for about three years going forward, a lot of times.
With the data piece, is it something that somebody's designing and then it's going to be a fixed structure? Or does each district have the ability to define some level of custom set of data that they can capture?
It is a great question. There is a predefined data model. Okay? And that data model gives you the girth of what are all the data elements and attributes that you can actually access and aggregate and report upon or view for informational purposes. But how often does the data model itself change? And how many different data models are we actually concerned with? So currently, we're using a SIP data model, and that is what, when we turn the ODS for instance, the central repository capturing data from all the source system, that's a SIP 2.5 implementation, so 2.5 is the version number. And during the summer, we're expecting to move to the next revision of that data model, which is three. And that aligns with SADS, it aligns with the ed5 models, I mean, it becomes almost concentric. It almost doesn't matter which of the three major flavors you're looking at, they all have the same core data elements.
I get the gist of what you're saying, but all of those acronyms totally flew. I'm guessing most...
I do that way too often.
Yeah, he does. So SIP stands for School and Opera Ability Framework, it came out about a long time ago. I know you guys know.
And that's a state or a...
No, it was developed by Oracle, Microsoft, all getting together, so schools have to have a common data model, because we need to be able to bring it in so they can do stuff with it. We started using SIP a long time ago, simply because we wanted to share information between our student information system, when a secretary put it in, it would automatically put it in the library system, put it in this other system. That's what it was for. Well, when this came along, we said, ooh, we can do vertical SIP, bring the data in, populate an operational data store on that data model, and then we can now make it available to different folks that need it in different ways. We have some translation functionality that goes to some of our other folks that do high speed data stores. But it's all the choice of the district, that's what we built in. They can go down to the element level about which kind of information they want to pass. So it's all approved by you. And that's the way Bernie and I have built this from the get-go for the IIL thing, because we knew the power had to remain in the districts. The last thing you want to do is give over more control to some state entity or, you know, that kind of thing. So that's why this whole thing is about building it that way.
We see our job as our core service that we provide to school districts as enabling and empowering the school district to be in possession of these services. It's part of your core mission, but you sometimes need assistance, and if we can share an infrastructure, share the services, then we do something.
I really wonder, do you think being on a platform like this puts districts in Illinois in a position where, I mean, I know with Common Core and all this stuff is going to be, you know, we're already looking at, how are we going to, you know, manage and navigate all this, all this data? Assessment and all that stuff, I'm guessing, I mean, I'm not trying to make, sell your product for you, but I'm just trying to think, who else could possibly be in a position to, you know, to tee that up?
The school districts are, quite honestly, not necessarily the board, but the members of the school district are the domain authorities. And utilizing and leveraging the domain expertise from the community nationally allows us to identify things like this SIP, for instance, and that large organization. And SIP is really appealing, for instance, because there are components that can go into food service component that you might be using in your district to help feed or put data into that system in an automated fashion.
Pre-introduced information, that kind of information.
And it's those little things that you may easily overlook, okay? Causing a lot of manual interaction that might happen between systems like that. And what we're trying to identify is, how do we lower that threshold of adoption, make that as minimal as possible, utilize automation where it makes sense, but to empower and enable you to have control and the ultimate say over how this stuff works and what you care about in that environment.
The last thing on the identity side, we're not making this up, we're on. That's why, that's really why Bernie's so important at this. I mean, he's from a national center for supercomputing. Again, these guys have done this kind of thing in higher ed for years and years about identity and how to federate identity. We're not making this up. They're basically leveraging organizations like IN Commons, which is an organization that deals with these kinds of things. And they're actually brought us under their umbrella of Illinois, along with nine other pilots in North Carolina, I think, I can't remember all the other ones. But to be able to make sure that we could actually develop this in the right way with the brightest minds around the country, we're not doing this just to throw a dice at it. We're doing it so it's something that we can also sustain, that is going to make sense. Plus, we also just really, we're doing a pretty good job of negotiating with vendors for like licensing for a lot of these products and things, that it's going to be very, very cost effective for school districts on board. Very cost effective.
Okay, for instance, the suggestion of using Google as an identity provider, for instance, that doesn't preclude needing to be able to authenticate on a desktop and to be able to utilize the normal resources, but how do you actually make that work together? We have a tool that does that job, okay? And helps you to facilitate that. That was facilitated with a contract that we negotiated with Aegis Identity. Because we're dealing with an IN Commons affiliate, IN Commons is the organization that defines the identity trust mechanics for all the public universities, basically 250 members in the United States and an international audience. Been going on for decades. So it's a well-established set of mechanics that are out there with a very large support community. And we're trying to make that available for K-12. Their focus has been only on an adult audience, because it's always higher education. So we have to ask questions like, what does it mean to try to utilize this kind of technology in a K-12 environment? And are there special considerations in terms of, when is it appropriate to propagate data through an authentication event? You know, like, are you a teacher or are you a student? And what's your name? And that sort of thing. So those are, those are things that we don't venture to answer personally. We engage the community and say, what's the best practice here? And what is the common consensus from domain experts from K-12? Because those are the audience that we're trying to cater to with this service.
In short, with our core services, that's what we can do with the DR and the infrastructure. I think those are the things you might just want to investigate possibly right now. Those other things are going to be definite connections. All of our members are very interested in identity and data. We can't give it to them all yet, because we just want to make sure that they understand what we're building on top of that. So they realize it's the bigger picture, so.
You mentioned about hiring. Am I trying to say that there is, there's staff that is Illinois Aligna Cloud employees?
No. Yeah, kind of.
And are you employees?
No, no, we all work for districts.[1635.04] We're a co-op and we work for districts. We do not have full-time staff employees. We utilize, because we, my entire district runs the Illini Cloud. So I run the whole data center. My staff works in an off-site facility that's a shared data center that's not even in the actual school district, but directly connected to it. So we actually lease that building, have offices for that, and those folks be able to support other school districts. Our board has been very open to making sure that that happens for the next couple of years so that we can build out these resources and be able to, you know, basically build out our services in our own district, too. Because these things, these things that we're showing you here, right here, the dashboards and the learning maps and those kind of things, we want those, too. We want them.
But perhaps there is a direct answer. Yes, there is contracted support staff. So in other words-
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I hire, I hire, I have a team of, from CPSI, we have Aegis Identity, we have Unicon.
But even, even the permanent staff, even though, let's say, for instance, Jim, Jim is a tech director at District 87. He also spends time working exclusively for Illini Cloud under a contractual relationship. So he's compensated for his time working for that effort.
I'm sorry, that's exactly right.
Okay, and that's true for the, the principals that work in the data centers in that fashion. And as, as we mentioned, we need to investigate what is the business model and what are the other slots that need to be filled in there? Are these executive class slots that need to be filled? Or are these labor slots that need to be filled? We plan on filling them in exactly the same way.
So who means the help desk?
There's a, we call their cloud ops team. There's three core people that serve on that cloud ops team.
Are they vendors or are they, are they vendors or are they contracted?
No, no, they're all, well, they're, they're, the first line is all district folks.
So with help desk, so you're just talking not like-
Our own help desk.
Right, that some kid's computer breaks down, he calls help desk. You're talking about if we have problems or questions regarding our disaster recovery or data storage and we have a question, you call someone-
We have people to take care of those issues all day long.
Okay.
And that's core staff.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's part, because you said you didn't, you weren't, you weren't in the help desk service area.
No, just help desk for our own services.
Right, right.
But we don't actually offer help desk as a service. But we should. But I cannot get my in for my guys who work with me because they say we will need more staff in order to be able to host those services. And I get what they're saying. So I don't want to get into that issue yet. So what we can do is give you what we do provide, which is virtual infrastructure, bland, empty, and we can walk through some folks and be able to see if we can stand something up, you know, and some, because there's free, there's free help desk staff, we're out there. And be able to populate it with your user base and work with your, your folks on being able to do that. That's what we can do. But ultimately, that would be your responsibility to maintain it. We don't want to run it as a service at this point. But it's something we'd be, we'd love to investigate with you guys.
So is that what your governing board is doing, is considering that?
Exactly what they do. Yep, and they keep us honest and make sure we're not overreaching and, you know, those kinds of things.
So the revenue you get from the districts buying services from Illini Cloud are invested back into either capital investment or, you know, I assume at some point, let's say, you, yeah, you mentioned that CPS looked at coming in and you were like, oh, we don't want them to get all these services because then we wouldn't be able to support them, we'd have to hire people or whatever, right? So I mean, ultimately, do you, do you staff up if you get a level of-
Yes, so that's, that's what, we weren't expecting that level of growth at that fast, but we understand that. So we, that's exactly why we're really happy to do that.
And you're planning to be able to do that.
Cloud scale growth requires that you take a very-
Agile.
Yeah, a very educated look at what, what you're doing because you can overstate, understate. And that's, that's exactly what the fear is here, is that as you're growing really, really fast, what are the core slots that need to be there? And what are the metrics that need to be put into place to help us decide when it's time to staff out in which areas?
You're currently providing services for CPS?
So we are, they're, they're part of the Race to Top School Districts and the IELT project. Part of the requirement for them to receive their Race to Top money is they must do data propagation into the IELT ODS, which is located in the Illini Cloud. So, I mean, that's, I have to go there Monday to try to figure out this thing with them and be able to figure out how that's going to happen.
Just thinking out loud, wouldn't they need to build their own data center and hook it up to you guys?
Yeah, they are due. They have, they have, we have a different model for them. They're a totally different animal because they're like an entire state themselves. So that's why we have a different model. Our folks who do the data propagation have an entire solution for that that's different.
No, we really do have to put CPS in scale. They only represent 20% of the student population in the state, you know, so it's not, not that much, but the-
A little bit bigger.
Yeah, so I guess is there a risk that you guys grow too, too fast and all of a sudden things start breaking and we're like, hello, help desk, what are you doing? And your guys, the guys in Bloomington are going, ah, putting out-
I'm going to be quite honest with you, that's, that's, that's one of our, one of our worst fears, is that we were going to grow too fast and we weren't able to keep up our rapid growth. But what we've done is we brought in some folks who are really good at bill, or dealing with startups like ours that are basically providing services for us to help us build our business, to be able to make sure that we're bringing in folks and we can look at long-term, you know, build outs of these kind of things and investment. And then we can be able to hire and be able to pay that back and those kinds of, the business folks that know those kind of things are a little bit, I'm still a K-12 guy, but that's exactly what we're doing. So we've hired some folks from, from, well, we first got our organization together with Gartner. And state helped us be able to do that because they see us as a core service and something that they need to continue to do because the state doesn't believe that they probably do cloud services very well either, at least ISB does not. And so they paid for us to be able to have a contract with them for a year, to be able to investigate these kind of things. Then we brought in another consulting company to also build that out and help us build our service catalog and build our services around that, our staffing needs and those kind of things as we grow different, different services within Illini Cloud. Because they're like any other cloud provider, they continue to grow. You have more peer groups that are just trying to be able to do more and more. We need to make sure that we match that with personnel and people that can do that. And that's exactly what we're doing right now.
And perhaps it's important to recognize that's a consortium of four school districts formally engaged in a contract. Nothing prevents that from growing into an organization that's made up of even more school districts that participate at that level. But you have to recognize that those four school districts are in it because they have skin in the game, okay? And they're providing some of the services and the facilities that make this work. So that's not everybody, but it's somebody that's out there.
I mean, I think, I think the fact that you guys are in schools and you're from schools is a huge plus. But on the other hand, we also had talked, had a community forum a couple of weeks ago where it was very clear that outsourcing made sense, that schools aren't necessarily, you know, that's not their core competency. So let's, you know, put that in the hands of some, somebody that where it is.
We get that a lot.
So we want to, you know, balance that out, I guess.
I know, I totally understand that. And I think, that's why we always say there's some low-end services that are really good to be able to test out, see what you get out of it. And just try it, see what, see, basically, DR is not going to hurt you. I mean, that's one of the things that are going to be probably really valuable for you and be able to see. And then if you want to throw up test environments and infrastructure to see how things perform, I would, I would venture to say our, our services are, are hard to match.
Okay, you're absolutely right. If you ask a commercial vendor, does this make sense? They're going to say, probably not, because they're not going to get paid in that equation. Okay? But secondly, this, this is begging to, to answer the question of, does it make sense and is it appropriate to have a by K-12, for K-12 support staff that is not in a tiny community, but actually a large community across the state? It's difficult across state boundaries in those sorts of contexts, but it's fairly easy to do that in a locale. You know, so that's what this model is. It's revolutionary, it's new, it's different. Look out across the country, you're not going to find more Illini Clouds, there aren't that many of them.
And we know, there's some districts that just aren't ready for us. We get it, it's okay. We just keep building out services, we're going to build out the folks and the services around it, and that's, that's okay with us.
Well, first test cases, we'll put together Camtasia presentation from the superintendent and have all of our 1,500 kids, you know, view it at the same time. See if we can bring your whole data center.
You know what's really neat is we actually have, so we host student technology conferences around the state. That's an Illini Cloud service, just like our BEECE training that we do. It's called Students of Alpha Technology. We have six sites throughout Illinois, and we provide all the services for those conferences. So we do connect rooms that provide, so kids up in Downers Grove can actually watch down in Carbondale, can watch in DeKalb and Bloomington, and then we can do the same thing in all different places. We actually provide that services. We do that for the entire ICE, the ICE meeting that's coming up next week for all their keynotes, we provide those key services for. So we have these little niche areas that we do. And, you know, we got 2,000 kids going to those kind of things and then being able to utilize those services. So that's, we see that as our core niche area where we, we try to add value to all the different organizations that we work with. So, neat thing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Matt.
Can I just ask one quick thing for Illini Cloud? We currently have 100 meg download and 10, 11 upload with Comcast. How's that going to affect Illini services and the current standing? And what recommendations do you have for internet connectivity for our services?
The faster the better. That's what he wants to do here. The bigger the pipe you can get, the better. Yeah, but it, but it is true because really, quite honestly, a lot of, lot of the, if you're looking at that, the cost benefit of being able to build a bigger pipe and moving services out, you're going to save money over time. Cloud services should save you more money, whether it be with us or other folks, it should be better. But the thing is about this, on your disaster recovery, you know, that one time you do your first upload, then we just do the deltas so that you're not hitting a lot of change rate there. But there's other services, too, that are lightweight as well. But you're, you're doing those kind of things now. You're connecting up to other services out on the internet, right? So it's the same, it's the same kind of thing. Bernie, you have something?
Yeah, there is also a possibility that there are other options that you haven't been able to explore. We've got some really top-notch people who are working on the interconnectivity between our, our data centers, between school districts and the last mile issues in a lot of cases. And we find venues that are available because we're also leveraging the research networks that are out there. We're leveraging things that you may or may not even know exist.
And you know about, I know that people know about that deal, Illinois Century Network, and we're obviously very closely working with them. We always have been. We're basically fulfilling their mission of what they originally wanted to do, which is hang services off their network. So there are opportunities there to be able to work with some of those folks or them to be able to get you in touch with some of the, like in our own, my own hometown, we built our own, own entire fiber solution for all of our school districts around the entire area. And that was one of the things, and then all those school districts obviously can get high-speed access to Illini Cloud services. But it was a really, they helped along with that. There's a lot of folks that do that. So networking's a big challenge in every community, it's just different because it depends on your, on your providers and, you know, and we all have something different ladders that we cross and everything in the state. It's always been a problem. We even heard about it today in the, at the IELT meeting, too.
That's right.
Sorry, we'll end there.
Well, and the, so the financials that you sent, I haven't looked at it totally, but is that going to tell me, it sounded like you do receive some state funding, federal funding?
Yeah, we, yeah, we do receive both, federal and state.
There was project funding, that was the reference that Jim was saying.
So something like, I'd be interested to know, how much is that of, of the entire budget? Do you rely on state funding, federal funding?
I'll have to get both that information from Steve about that, but I can easily do that.
Who has, has the financials been sent to everybody or just to Zach at this point?
I sent it, whatever you sent to me, I sent it. When it downloads, you'll get it. Zach had asked for the financials in the last conference call.
If I remember correct, this is for the financials for services that we currently charge districts for only. It was not the financials for revenue generated from project spaces like IELT, the $5 million funds for-
And I think that that's really, really important because the sustainability model does not take into account that there may be injections of state or federal dollars for project-specific goals, okay? For instance, IELT, the big project that we have out there, yes, there is a big injection of infrastructure support for that, but that, that is not how we compute sustainability.
Yeah, that's, you know, because I'm wondering about your, I kind of assume that you have some kind of capital reserve, right, for projects as you're looking down the road, five years, one year down the road, five years down the road, 10 years down the road?
For hardware sustainability.
For hardware and stuff like that, and your data, your data service centers, maintain them and all. So what does that look like? What is the financial health of this, this co-op?
Right.
Do you have a five, like a five-year projection, a five-year pro forma, five-year strategic plan at all?
Nope.
Okay.
No, we do not.
So there's nothing formal?
And that's basically, those are the kind of things that we are definitely, that's part of our whole process right now for IELT, to build out these ongoing services for them. You know, we're based in school districts that have, are funding a lot of the backend for this with the expectation that we are continuing to fund that, be able to take revenues and displace existing costs in the school district. That's our ultimate goal so that we, we don't have that. But the districts are doing a lot of the backing behind that right now.
I would think that when the state and federal governments would have grant programs that would come up, that they would prefer to fund Illini Cloud as opposed to a bunch of individual districts.
We're finding that to be a really good thing.
Would you see, would you see that to be true?
Yes, we are finding very, that, that's exactly what, especially when we were able to share that we, our sustainability is what our biggest focus is. We want to be able to make sure that we can sustain ourselves. So, yeah, that really-
There has been more than one instance of that case. Right. I would think it makes sense.
And we'll just continue to build it.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much, Jim. Bernie.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda are the minutes of the previous meeting. And I want to make an announcement that the minutes of the regular business meeting of January 21st, 2014, will be corrected to include the, well, include the minutes of the public hearing that we had for the waiver of the holidays, the required waiver. They don't include that at this time. So anyway, may I have a motion to approve the minutes listed on the agenda? The finance committee meeting of January 14th, the special board meeting, meeting of January 14th, the minutes of the closed session of January 14th, the minutes of the policy committee of January 21st, the minutes of the regular, of the regular business meeting, which will be corrected to include the book, book hearing for the waiver of the holidays, the minutes of the closed session of January 21st, the minutes of the special board meeting for February 4th, the minutes of the closed session for February 4th, the minutes of the special board meeting for February 11th, minutes of the closed session for February 11th. May I have a motion to approve all of those?
Second.
Can we not have so many meetings?
Yeah, I guess.
Someone was very busy Friday night, so.
Well, you know what, there's always two per, you know, there's an open session and a closed session, so there's two minutes per meeting.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Anyway.
Who's seconded? Somebody seconded, yeah. I think our seconded, I'm-
Our second, David firsted.
Okay. David firsted. Okay. And just call the roll. Okay. Randy Brockway. Lisa Gaynor.
Aye.
David Kadama.
Aye.
Rachel Morella.
Aye.
Michael O'Brien.
Aye.
Arthur Perry.
Aye.
Mary Rose Mangia.
Aye.
And it's, all the minutes are approved as presented with the correction to the January 21st regular business meeting. Next on our agenda will be a report from our superintendent on the guiding principles.
Thank you, Mary Rose. It is also available for the public's view in Board Book, so you can click on and see the entire report. It's three pages. So for the sake of time, I'm just going to kind of give you highlights. For academic and professional excellence, the math Common Core alignment team met last week and did two days of building background knowledge. Dr. Gannon and our two ELL teachers attended the Perfect Match workshop. It was required of us to attend this from our ELL program audit that we had conducted in the summer. And the results were that we need to adopt more standards and research assessment data. We have to have more program and design configurations for our assessments and then also have more instruction for our bilingual and ELL students. Our 21st Century Think Tank team met on February 5th, and we are going to continue to look at the Common Core and how 21st Century learning standards are aligned. The team looked at the four Cs of communication, collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, and then how we can include them into our current curriculum and instruction program. Mrs. King and Ms. Folland have put together a committee of teachers and parents that are going to be looking at our special education and student services, looking at least restrictive environment as well as our early childhood blended program. So they'll be looking, those two programs, identifying what is a need of priorities and then reviewing the policy and procedures to put those in place. Financial and operational excellence, Matt is working very well with our temporary solution with Net 56 to kind of keep our operational programs going. As you can see, we had some water damage in Central's main office. We also had the equipment fixed, excuse me, the equipment in the server room fixed at Ames. We had a coil repair at Hauser and Central. And we have agreed to conduct our portion of the share of the traffic study for the handicap dropout flame in front of Central and Hauser. And one of the things I wanted to point out is, in December, we presented at the education committee meeting a need for possible increase of classroom space. While we are working with principals, we've identified at least two to three more classrooms that we are going to reorganize for classroom space. For example, we are going to go from one third-grade classroom into one fourth-grade classroom at Blight, and currently there are fourth, fourth-grade classrooms, so that'll free up one classroom at Blight. And there's some other situations that haven't been finalized yet, so we will not be looking to relocate the district office for at least one more year because we can make it work with the space that we have. For rigorous communications, Dr. Gannon provided you an overview of the survey feedback that was given in the fall during parent-teacher conference times. So we're going to continue to monitor those communication and climate goals by building and also as a district. We're going to work on increasing our communication and parent involvement as a district leadership team, and we're also going to readminister the survey to assess our progress. And I will be providing you the complete survey results tomorrow in a PDF form. And then in addition to attending the Perfect Match workshop, Dr. Gannon and some of our ELL teachers put together a bilingual parent advisory committee that met last week, and it's also required of us in our audit to inform and educate parents that are bilingual or ELL, or, excuse me, have students in our ELL program, to let them understand what our bilingual program looks like, understanding the access testing, which is given to all students that are ELL students, and then give them an update on what the audit was and what we're doing to address those things with our teaching and learning.
How's our attendance been to those presentations?
Can you answer my question?
It was last Thursday, that one was lower. That one, I think we had between 10 and 12 parents.
Of what's the total invitee?
We have, we have close to 40 students that are in the program. So I'd say that our first debate meeting was in December or early, early October, and we had closer to 25.
When are they held?
So they are held typically on Thursdays. We usually schedule the meetings about a month, two weeks a month, then a timeframe for the next meeting. And I think what we're trying to do is hold the meetings at different schools. So first meeting was at Ames, and that's where our bilingual program is the biggest. And so our last meeting was at Central, and so I don't know if that had been assigned to us or not.
What time of day is it?
6:30.
6:30.
Yeah.
And so for the, for the families that aren't able to attend, how do they get the information?
It depends.
It's presented?
Some, well, there's two ways. One way is that we have, we typically at the meetings will have handouts, and we translate them into Spanish. We're working on other languages as well. And then we do give extra copies to people in the community, and they are always saying we're going to keep it to our friends and this and that. We also leave copies in the office, in the schools.
Do we mean so, you know, if they, if they do have an email account to email them information, updates? I mean, just.
We, that's a great idea. I mean, we could, absolutely. As a matter of fact, we, we don't, we don't have necessarily a group. And like, what I mean by that is we don't have an email group that's our, so that would be a really good idea, just to put that together.
Or is some of that information able to be posted on, to our website, accepted to our website?
Yeah, absolutely. We could. Yeah, there's a couple, a couple options. You know, I think, one thing that I think we really need to work at is, especially if we're going to, you know, be posting on the website, is taking a look at some additional languages for families and offering, you know, different options for them to navigate on the website. I think it's a start. We can put in English and, English and Spanish right now as the two, both Spanish is the one language that we are able to try and say right now. But ideally, when we put it up publicly, I'd love to have a variety of languages because we have a very diverse group of parents.
From your prior district, did you, did you get involved in that and posted in different languages? Does that require like a service to, in order to translate into all different languages?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what it takes.
And we have Pearl in the office that can translate in Spanish for us, so we do that, but otherwise, yeah.
But she can't translate into Chinese or Mandarin?
No, no. And then it all depends, whether it was bigger, so we had more options internally, you know, but we did, we did hire some out. Yeah. And it's going to be an issue too with report cards, because really legally we should be translating our report cards into our parents' native languages, which makes, I mean, so they can, they can read into general report cards.
That would be good.
Yeah.
I would support that.
Yes, but that's another thing that we're struggling with right now, because that's a pretty big undertaking. I don't remember how many different languages we have, but I want to say it's 25, 30 plus right now, just in that. Now, that's just in the, that's just in the group that we know. It's not all of our bilingual, that's what I'm going to say, so people have gone through the program and that, but I don't have an idea of how many different languages we have in the district.
I'd be interested in hearing kind of what that, what that cost would be in order to be able to provide that service, and, you know, I think it'd be great, just, you know, I'd be interested to know, you know, what that would all entail.
Yeah, and my, my guess is it's going to be quite prescient at first, because it allotted, I mean, there's a lot of standard documents that we use that, you know, would be a one-time translation.
Uh huh.
And then after that, it's not going to be, but I'll, we'll get to that for sure.
All right, Joe.
Just a real quick question on the Hauser surveys. You had mentioned there would be some surveys going out to parents for their ideas on principles for Hauser.
That was launched today.
It was launched today. All right.
I just have one other quick question. When, once we complete kindergarten information or registration night, are you going to, are you planning on coming back to us with how that, those numbers translate into spaces?
Yeah.
I think that would, I would be interested in understanding how we're going to disperse those numbers in all of the different schools next year.
Can I just ask, did you know when that kindergarten roundup or information?
Six.
Six. Okay, so probably at the April board meeting, we'll have some good ideas.
And then also how that impacts all these other programs that you mentioned in the space, classroom space, per section.
But those numbers are already coming in, is that right? People are already registering, right?
For kindergarten?
For kindergarten?
No, no, the information meeting hasn't been, right?
Okay.
Till the sixth.
Yeah, March sixth.
Right.
March 10th, okay. For some reason, I thought it was starting in February.
Yeah, and we'll have ideas after that first initial meeting, and then it's sort of, if anybody falls out from that. So I would just be curious to know how we're going to, how many there are, and how we're going to put sections where.
We're planning on talking about that at the April education meeting, but we'll look at class size policy too.
Perfect, thanks.
Ready for that, Art?
For class size policy discussion?
When are we doing that?
April. During your committee meeting.
Looking forward to it. Okay.
I better write that down.
Yes.
All right, next agenda items are reports from the school board committees, and starting with education, I guess, told what you're going to be doing in April.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we just met a week ago, so why have I forgotten everything that happened? Sorry. I'm sorry. Can you, can you come back to me? I'm so sorry.
What's your finance?
Finance. The last finance meeting was January 14th. We will meet again on March 4th in two weeks. At the January meeting, we had a presentation from Quest Food Service, which is a food service, isn't that a co-op? No, it's a food service that does one of the other food ser, service, boy, I'm having a rough time tonight. It services food for one of the other districts in, schools in our district, and there was opportunity maybe to work together to reduce costs for us. We also had a presentation on the website audit. The website's been looked at to see if what's in compliance and out of compliance, and what we need to update, and that was presented to the Finance Committee. We had a brief discussion about future technology infrastructure options, and since January, we've learned quite a bit more and attended a whole bunch of other things in regards to moving that initiative along. We talked briefly about management reports and looked to the board to send their ideas on what they wanted and that to Vavna or myself. And then we had a discussion about relocating the district office in regard, and also tying that to some other educational programs that need space. And we had a couple updates in January on the server rooms, the architect RFP, and the recognition dinner that'll happen in the spring.
Thank you. Policy committee, do we, just want to briefly recap what we talked about earlier today?
Short mean, because I was late.
They don't have to know.
Duty calls. But we met, the Policy Committee met earlier this evening, and we did, conducted a second reading of two policies, one on ethics and gift ban, and the second on administrative responsibilities of the building principals. They are, they were moved forward for final approval at this meeting, so they're up for vote on this agenda. Then we held a discussion regarding policy 280, which is on the board member code of contact, code of conduct. We just tweaked some of the language in that, in that policy, and Art Perry is going to, has volunteered to do a drafting of one of, one of the exhibits based upon our past meetings with the, our ISB rep. We had two meetings discussing about our kind of, our expectations as, as board members in terms of procedures that, that we will follow.
And I just realized I have a whole extra day to get that done, because I'm getting rescheduled, it's the next one day for March.
So we expect a comprehensive.
Yeah, it's going to be extra good.
Extra good. Then we conducted first readings from our policy updates from Press Update 83, which is the most current press update, so very happy to say that we're not too far behind on these press updates. We had one, two, three, four, five, conducted five first readings related to insurance management, that's regarding catastrophe insurance for students, drug and alcohol-free workplace, abuse and neglected child reporting, staff development program, and ethics and Due to the limited time, that was all we were able to complete for that agenda. All the other, all the other agenda items are, have been deferred to our March committee meeting, and that's my report.
All right, thank you, David.
I can say a few words about last week's ed committee meeting, content, sorry. So yes, the, the main piece of this meeting was, we had a presentation from Mr. Gary Soto and Mr. Bob Crow from Action Learning Systems, who are the consultants who are supporting the district using a tool called Sync Solution to align the, our current curricular materials with the Common Core standards. So how many days have they met with the, with the CCAT teams?
So they meet four days with the LA and four days with that.
Okay. So in that time, they've been, you know, working together, but more than that, the presentation was what do high-performing districts, you know, need to do in order to lead in the Common Core era? And so just a quick recap of the high-level topics, you know, three principles, all students can learn, success breeds success, and we, as, you know, a district, control the conditions of success. There were four, four principles, focus on what students should know and be able to do successfully, align all programs, practices, and procedures to support what we want students to know, what the focus is, raise the expectations and maintain high expectations for all stakeholders, students, teachers, administrators, staff, and parents, and then provide the opportunities for those stakeholders, students, teachers, to professional development, et cetera, to reach their highest potential. And so those are the principles, and then we talked through some, you know, direct, interactive instruction and how to optimize that, since it's been proven to be the best, most effective teaching methodology. So did I miss anything?
All right, thank you.
And then after that, we did discuss the parental involvement survey results, so.
You want to just give us a quick update on the working committees?
Yes, we have a draft policy. It was on the Policy Committee agenda today. We did not get to it, and it will be on the next agenda, I believe. David, is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
All right, thank you. And now from the board liaisons, want to start with the ISB, any activity, David?
No, I'll just, I'll just say that the, with the legislation, legislative, legislature being in session now, they're introducing quite a few bills that are going to be impacting school districts, number, quite a few new mandates that are being proposed that would impact our curriculum and requirements of school districts, so, you know, expect that the Policy Committee will have to be dealing with more updates to the policy if a lot of these bills get, get passed. So other than that, that's all.
Parents' leadership?
Parent leadership team met after the January board meeting on the 22nd, and we had a pretty lengthy discussion about the calendar, proposed calendar, as well as the proposed professional development late start concept. And Vavna gave an update on the guiding principles that were discussed at the board meeting. Our next meeting is next week, 2/26.
Want to tell us any of the feedback on the calendar? Is there any?
You know, it was really presented, and we were looking for feedback for the PLT or the PTA, PTOs to go back and get feedback. I don't, I don't think there was any real specific feedback at that time. It was more of a conversation, looking for feedback.
All right. And I guess Riverside Education Council, is there a report? I don't think Patty's here today. Is there anybody else? Nope. All right. Yeah, it was item H. We'll just move on. Financial information items. Zach, are you going to present anything on the financial report? What is this thing called here? Just the, if budget, I guess I have a question on the budget fiscal year 13 to fiscal year 14. I don't know what we call this report. But anyway, I'm noticing here, and I'm, that at this time last year, for fiscal year 2013, we spent about, close to 60% of our expenditures, and right now, at this time this year, we're at 48.05, so I see that is, what about 10% less? And I find that, I was just wondering if you could explain why we're kind of behind in budgeted expenditures? And I want to add one, one question to that, is that we were told at the beginning of, like, July, you know, with the start of this fiscal year, that our expenditures at that time were high because many of the, you know, expenditures were not put through last year because Dr. Lambruson was gone, so they didn't make it into fiscal year 2013? So in light of that and the fact that we're 10% behind last year, can you explain that?
Well, it could be a timing issue, a month. Also, it could relate to the fact that I was basing my budget numbers, because I had no history of the school district, and I did say when I was doing the budget that I was basing it on historicals, the previous, and I used, I believe, I went back three or four years, so budgeting my numbers, I used that percentage. I can dig into more detail if you can, if there's a particular county you're really looking at.
Well, to solve them, but it's driven by the education fund.
Well, how about the transportation? That seems like something that would be somewhat predictable, and it's, there's, it's a 20-point difference.
In transportation?
Yes. So.
Yeah, I can get.
I mean, do we have some students that maybe graduated, that we had special transportation that we no longer have?
Actually, what we did, we had, even we had a student mid-year that is not on our books anymore too.
That was in the outplacement program?
Yes, that we transferred, that we transported to Outkamp.
And it's the same with education. Education's about, it's education and transportation are the big.
Right, right.
Not comparisons.
But education is, I expect that, a lot of that's driven salaries and expenses.
Sure. Benefits too.
Benefits, benefits in that too. Okay.
And so these, these are percent of the budget expended as of this point in time, which would be the end of January or the end of February?
The end of January.
January 31st.
Okay, and compared to January of last year, right?
Correct.
And considering that it's mainly driven by salaries.
Salaries is just a major percentage of.
So the budget's driven largely by salaries, and the expenses are driven largely by, it ought to be pretty much the same, all right? Anyway, yeah, I, again, I just wondered if you knew of anything in particular that was driven in.
I can look into detail and.
And the, I guess the other question I would have is, were the invoices or the expenditures for salaries from fiscal year 2013, were those also delayed?
No, no, salaries, no.
So in other words, so the expenses that were, you know, delayed because of Dr. Lambruson's departure would not have impacted salaries?
Not salaries, no.
Okay. All right. All right. All right. Any questions on the payables? Anyone? Current anticipated expenditures, any?
I just have one question there. The last, I think it was at the last meeting, we talked about the traffic study, and we asked some questions that we were gonna go back to the village to get answered. Didn't, like, Waaga couldn't use the existing one?
Yeah, they said the existing one wasn't, the study wasn't conducted for a handicap lane. That was their explanation. So, it wasn't factored for a handicap lane.
It was about the traffic flow for the drop-offs?
The drop-off.
In the pickups, right?
Correct. And it wasn't current. The 2007 was the traffic study they did on Woodside Drive, and the 2011 was the one they did at the Bankers' Row.
Aikenside.
So, they didn't feel the study was current enough for Woodside Drive, and it wasn't focused on getting job offers.
And the firm that they used, that's kinda like the firm that they just have on, kind of, retainer? That's...
Correct.
For whatever kind of engineering, traffic surveys? That's the firm that they use?
Right.
So, at that time, we kinda had questions. You know, since then, I think you've answered some for me. Where do we stand? Do we need to, how do we proceed with this? Or have we proceeded?
I notify the village that we are in agreement to share the cost.
Okay, very good.
And then, when, that's gonna be completed by when?
Then, I don't know right now.
Is the thought that that firm is gonna come present to us the results? Or somebody, you, I mean, once we get it completed?
Once they provide the information, yeah. It can be the firm or whatever they provide for, once they can present it.
We need to communicate a preference? I mean, I'd like to see this put in place before the end of the school year. So, like to move forward with that, right?
Do they know how, what's the time? Once we say go, is it...
I'll reach out to them and ask.
There's a couple issues related to traffic out front here that have come to my attention that I would want the study to consider. One of those would be the parking on the other side of Woodside. Presently, I understand, or I believe to be true, that most of that is teacher parking, and that it's a four-hour limit there. However, that's not being followed. So, I'm wondering how the parking situation could change the traffic situation and drop off. So, that would be, that would be one thing. The other one would be, we have students from, in kindergarten here in the morning that walk across the street to the Methodist Church for an after, well, I guess it's a kindergarten class in the afternoon that's hosted by the city. And at present, there's no opportunity for those parents to pick up those kids from the Methodist Church at a, at a time and a place that's safe for those children and those parents. This is a Riverside Recreation Program, but it's linked to our kindergarten, I guess, if I understand it correctly.
Is that correct?
I don't understand that.
I wasn't aware of it. I don't think, is it to the city?
My child goes to it. It's through the Parks and Rec Department.
Okay.
And things follow the same curriculum, but it's in no, by no means is it limited to the district.
Did you walk the street?
Yeah. From here. A rec department, rec department employee walks over here, and then walks maybe twelve kindergartners across the street. And it's not so much at that time that there's any congestion, but when those students are let out, which is about after three o'clock, that that's the same time that we're having congestion with. And do you see this to be true?
Yeah, it's run Monday through Friday, and so, obviously, we all know with Central and Howser, there's tons of parents waiting to pick up all these children, and then you have probably twelve kids that are picked up from the Methodist Church. So, me personally, I go there like ten minutes early and get there ten minutes early so I can get to life. But, I mean, it's, sometimes you're putting your hazards on, sometimes you're double parking. I mean, it's not, but I don't really know what the solution is.
So, Randy, are you just suggesting that that be considered as part of the traffic?
Well, Zach, do you have the scope of the services that are gonna be provided for the traffic survey?
Well, all I have is an email response that said they're gonna consider the traffic flow of Woodside Drive, so, and working with the handicap drop-off line.
Well, I assume to get the nine thousand dollar quote, they got, they had some scope of service that was gonna be expected to be required of them, and that's where they came up with the nine thousand dollar quote, so...
Which might or might not include those concerns, which then would probably increase the price.
So, but to answer your question, I think you just posed the question that, yes, I would want this study to look at that, because we're talking about our neighbor, and we have students from here going over there, and then getting picked up at the same time. So, there is a concern there with how it all works out.
Just ask the bill if it's gonna include both sides of Woodside, is that...
I think it should stick with the handicap. I mean, that's what we're here to talk about. I mean, the purpose of this is to determine the best place for this handicap lane, and that, I see that as our focus. Because that's pertinent, that's absolutely pertinent to our district.
But what we're talking about, David, is, we're talking about traffic congestion and movement.
We have some students that go to another business, a church that's conducting a business, and you're asking us to fund for a survey to support some solution for them?
It's a par-district program, is what more, I think, more relevant.
Well, it's a par, yeah, some other business.
It just happens to be at a church.
And it happens to have a let-out time that coincides with ours. So, I mean, we've got...
You know, why don't you just ask if in the scope of the forty-five hundred dollars we're paying, those things can be considered? And if not, then I think we don't go for more, we're not asking them to pay for more. We are not asking, I am not...
It's the original scope, but the traffic flow for handicap lane on Woodside Drive.
I would just say while we're looking at it, let's look at the problem comprehensively, and if there's some things that we can do.
But if it increases the cost, we have to determine, look at that.
Well, you know what, we're gonna, we've agreed to forty-five hundred, and if they wanna look at the traffic caused by the, you know, par-district program, you know, I assume that's their cost, because it's their par-district.
Just to sort of recap briefly, I don't wanna take too much time, but once we have this traffic study, what happens after that? Does the village go off and do something?
Well, they'll determine the location of the handicap drop-off. That's what the study should be successful in trying to get to.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, you know, I don't think it hurts to suggest that the village expand the scope of their study, but it's not our main concern. And I, you know, I think it would make sense from them, they're the traffic experts, but...
I guess the overall traffic issue is something that needs ongoing attention.
Right, and it's, I don't think we just look at one point, a pain point, if you might call it that, but we look at, we look at the whole artery out there. We look at Woodside, and we...
But it's the village who is looking at it.
I understand that, but I'm just saying that if we're sharing in the cost, let's get a comprehensive study that's going to answer the questions that will serve us the best.
All right, I just recommend that you bring it to the attention of the village, that there's considerable traffic emanating from that location.
I'll report back to if there's an additional cost.
All right, thank you.
But you still want us to move ahead with the forty, with the initial proposal?
Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't wanna slow it down.
You don't wanna delay it?
We don't wanna slow down at all. All right. All right. All right. Next, just, I'd like a motion that the board approve, or I'd like a motion for the board to approve the payment of the list of general invoices, Schedule A seven forty-two as presented.
So moved. Second.
We'll call? Randy Brackway?
Yes.
Lisa Gaynor?
Hi.
David Kadama?
Hi.
Rachel Morella?
Hi.
Michael O'Brien?
Hi.
Arthur Perry?
Hi.
Mary Rosangia? Aye. We've approved, the board has approved the general invoices, Schedule A seven forty-two. Our next item on our agenda is the 2014-2015 official district school calendar. May I have a motion to approve the official 2014-2015 school calendar prior to discussing the item?
So moved.
Second.
Open for discussion. Any questions on draft number six of the 2014?
Does the draft include the one hour?
No, you're just approving the school days, not the hours of the school day. And that will present that, will present options to the professional development plan at the March nineteenth meeting.
Okay, I have a couple, a couple of questions. Why are we, my first data that comes to mind is, I, you know, I personally favor an August twenty-sixth start date. I think that's about where we start at now. I just think that it's a good date, and we could move those institute days into Friday or Monday. But then, I have a question about why are we moving the November dates for school, institute, and parent-teacher? Traditionally, we've always had that, you know, that week of Thanksgiving, so people can enjoy that, that week of Thanksgiving off. I don't know why we're moving that.
The process for this year's calendar, we worked with the principals, as well as members of the REC. That committee is called ADLT, which is All District Leadership Team. And the feedback regarding specifically the Thanksgiving break was that a lot of parents and teachers, reported about half, weren't coming to parent-teacher conferences because of that Thanksgiving break. They were leaving to go on vacation, so they were scheduling conferences before and after that time. So, this way, this was right, it was closer to the trimester, right when the trimester ends, and I believe that trimester ends on November seventh. So, then the report cards would be distributed five days later on the eleventh, actually four days later, excuse me, on the eleventh, and then parent-teacher conferences would be one day after. So, they would have that progress update to share right away.
The report card will come out soon, because you're backing the days up?
Right.
On August, okay.
Right.
Is there a possibility, though, if we kept the days, the Thanksgiving days up, if we can start offering the opportunity or the possibility of doing conferences, either over the phone, do it be a computer? I mean, there's other ways to do that. I mean, because then those parents and families can do what they want with those days and have the, still attend virtually the conference.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we can definitely provide that. I think they still, I think they do that now. You know, I think they do parent-teacher conferences. A lot of times, they wanna be in person, looking at, you know, like a map report or specific projects, but I think they do.
No, I understand, ideally, that's what they want to do. What hap, my question is, what happens if we don't pass it as-is tonight? Can we pass it piecemeal, or do you have to pass it in the entirety?
You have to pass it in its entirety, because it goes to the state then.
All right. So, what happens if it doesn't pass tonight as drafted?
You can present another option. You know, we can do it tonight if you say, you know, we'll present the calendar, but we wanna change these days.
We have to decide tonight on this calendar.
When is this?
If not, or table it. Table it and do it in March.
All right, and table, come up with a better alternative in March. Yeah, my question is that you really think that by moving the report card date up and throwing out parent-teacher conference on that Friday, that attendance is just gonna jump at the conferences? I just don't, I don't see parents say, oh, okay, good, now we can, we don't have to go on vacation, and we can do our parent-teacher conference. I would think that there's a, that if they're concerned about their child's, you know, grades or whatever, that they, it wouldn't come down to a parent-teacher conference on that day, whether it's in November or not? I just don't get it.
I take issue, too, with the August early start date, especially since we're gonna be getting out later in June. It's really gonna be painful come next August. I think that I support a start date after possibly the twenty-sixth.
And the August twentieth date is, that, you said, that aligns with the high school and the other feeder district?
The high school is the one week earlier.
One week earlier.
And then District ninety-four and ninety-five have the same institute day and same start day, and the same institute days throughout the year.
What's the advantage of aligning our calendar with the high school, other than like the spring break and the winter break, doing something like that? I can see it, aligning those days and potentially professional development days. What's the advantage of mimicking our calendar with theirs, modeling it?
With the high school?
With the high school, yes. Just feeder districts.
We're not, because we're already a week, we're mimicking the feeder districts. But we're matching breaks with the high school, right?
The breaks match with the high school. Some of our institute days match with the high school. And the three feeder districts, we have the same start date and end date, and our, some of our institute days are the same.
What does the high school do for Thanksgiving week?
I think it's, I don't know, I don't have it in front.
This is the same, I believe, is the high school. They go to school two days.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the one to the high school?
Yeah, the vacation days, I think, are the same. Winter break, Thanksgiving break, and spring break.
Which is, oh, in, for perspective, the last couple of years, spring break and winter break have matched the high school exactly. The start and end dates have not. So, I mean, just for point of reference.
And we are off a week. We're off a week with the start and end for high school, too.
And this is still our plan? You know, we had some of our teacher-institute days aligned with the high school, and doing so, we kinda did a more, a larger professional development, education, helping with the, I guess, dealing with some of these issues, transitioning our curriculum from, especially Howser, into the, into high school. Is that the plan still?
We have two days right now, October thirty-first and February thirteenth, are the same as the three, as the three feeder districts.
And we plan to have that kind of joint?
Yes.
Teacher-institute.
Are there any other joint institute days?
No.
Was Halloween a joint institute day?
Yes.
Oh, Halloween is?
I thought Halloween was the records day.
Lisa, we had talked about that, but when we were gonna do the professional development proposal, the teachers said that they'd rather have that regular, whether we do it late-start or early release, we haven't come up with that, but we would use that, for example, the Thursday before, that, if we did a late-start, they would do their records day that. We would give up a professional development time.
And I like, I have, the Halloween, I hear tradition, and I understand that, and I think that there's a lot of good that comes from the community, being able to be at school that day and be, partake in the festivities that have happened. And I wonder if we, and I know we talked about this earlier, if you flip that day and let kids come in the afternoon instead of the morning, if it has to be a half-day.
Does that count as a full day? What's the requirement? How many hours do they have to be in school?
Five.
Five hours.
All right.
So, that wouldn't count.
How come on October thirty, you have a half-day for parent-teacher conferences, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but then, one, two, three, maybe five weeks later, you have another conference scheduled for it. I don't, why, why, you know what?
I think that first one is that...
Uh, the...
October thirty, is that mid-trimester?
Yep, October thirty.
It's invite-only.
No, it's invite-only.
It's invite-only. It's, and there's, there's typically one somewhere in there.
Okay, but why can't, what, I think what, I probably don't like the most is these half-days. half days. Can we just combine it, just one day off, and take the thirty-first, make that a full day, and then the Friday, the third, make that a half day, school, you know, school improvement, and then the afternoon parent teacher conference? That way you get the thirty-first set up, and you make that day off by, make that day up by pushing, you know, uh, the August twenty-sixth.
What month do you want?
From October.
October third.
You can't, um, we have to, those student early release days count as two attendance days, so November third is an, is an attendance day, excuse me, October third is an attendance day, and November thirteenth is an attendance day. We'd have to add an attendance day.
Right, so then let's add those attendance days in June.
Okay.
Are you saying that we need five hours to call it a, a full day?
A full day.
A full day.
Yes.
Okay. I guess I would echo your concern, Michael, about the half days. I, I hear it from parents, and I have heard it from parents repeatedly through the years that working parents have to find a, a way to pick up their child at eleven-thirty in the morning, and that's the end of the half a day, and provide for either daycare or taking that child back to work.
I agree with Randy. If your statement's a half day, I think for parents it, it's a full day. And, I mean, that's, that's the way I look at it, is okay, great, we're going to her for a half day, I got to stay that, 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 that whole day. And I, I just think it's a inconvenience. And I'm in favor of combining the thirty-first and the third to, to one day, and make that the, a, a full day off on the third. And that way we preserve the, the Halloween. And then November, what, thirteenth and fourteenth, making that, you know, a, a, a full day off on, uh, the, the twenty-first. And then that way, uh, and then you go, take those two days off on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, get that whole week off, which I think a lot of parents like, and then you back those days off e, either in August, or you do it in, in June.
I like Mike's suggestion. I would modify that just one thing, is instead of having the third, it looks like, we used to be, that we had the calendar, it used to be a five-day week, weekend for, four or five-day weekend for Columbus Day, so instead of the third, make it like the tenth. So you have the four-day weekend, which we had at one point.
It's because we started a week earlier, so you want us to move back the start date? Because that's how the trimesters are lining up. Like, that's week.
The third, October third is the end of the trimester.
Is the middle of the trimester.
Or middle of the trimester. And if you moved the start date back a week, then it would be November tenth.
Moving, okay, so moving the start date back to, what's the date that we're on?
I, I.
Isn't that what she was suggesting?
Start date up to the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh?
I, I like the twenty-seventh, because then that twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth you can do as institute days. And the twenty-seventh, the start date, which most of parents have gotten emails, phone calls, accosted at Riverside Foods for, for, for those days. I don't, I, you know, I did, the emails I get, no one's, no one has said to me, my God, please align with the high school. I, I just haven't heard it. Most people are writing and concerned about, you know, pushing the, the school to, to late, late start date. I, I get the idea that you're trying to do the best job to align it with the high school, but I don't, I, I think more people don't, I think more people don't like it.
Well, we're not aligning the start of ten.
Last year in this process, I did receive a bunch of align, please align the, the fall, the, the breaks with the high school.
And that's what we're doing, the breaks?
Right, no. But I mean, so, just to say, to, 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 I'm not saying the start and the end, I'm saying the middle, because if people are moving around on Christmas vacation and they want to go someplace, and you got two different starts and ends, I get that. I totally get that.
But to start, start at the end of the summer, I, I don't think that's, that's quite the concern.
No, that's different, that's a different, that's different than what I'm, than I'm saying. I also, uh, I also like the fact, and I mentioned this the last month, we talked about this, I, I truly believe kids learn better when there's solid blocks of weeks of education, meaning five days, five days, five days, five days, crazy week, or whatever you want to call it. I think, to your point, Michael, if we looked at November and we put those days back in the week of Thanksgiving, or some other configuration, that gives us like five solid weeks of learning. And I think there's some benefit to that for kids. So.
So you don't even want, like, parent teacher conferences in that week?
Well, no, I mean, you have to, but you have to do that, because that's, no, well, typically the parent teacher conferences have been in, in November, and that doesn't work because it's been poor attendance. And I've also heard that loud and clear from staff members that they've had to reschedule many conferences to accommodate people not being around that week of Thanksgiving. So I say one thing, and I, I kind of, I'm talking out two sides of my mind, I mean, I like the five weeks in a row for solid learning, but I also understand the piece that parent teacher conferences are important for the staff, and they like to be able to do it in the, on the day that they have the hours to do it, not trying to move it all around. So I think that's a consideration we, we should think about, just my thoughts.
Yeah, I, here's, here's what I, I guess I came up with, is that on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, we have institute day.
In August?
In August. Start on the twenty-seventh, keep September the same. October tenth, we have school improvement in the morning and parent teacher in the afternoon. Have a full day for October thirty-first, because, uh, uh, because of Halloween, and I don't want my house egged. And then.
Eggging it anyway.
Uh, yeah. And, and then we keep, uh, November thirteenth and fourteenth as full days, as regular attendance days. Twenty-first would be improvement and parent teacher conference, and then take off the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, as, as we always have, and then whatever days we, we miss, we make up in, in June.
So you're basically suggesting move everything back one week?
Yep.
Um, we'll have to see how it is.
Well, not sort of, because then you're moving around some days in November. Yeah, start later, but then fix November.
Correct.
I mean, that's, and October.
Correct, I mean, we're fixing, we're, we're, we're pushing dates forward in August, fixing October, fixing November, keeping December as is with those two weeks, because I think it's going to align with that, any, anybody. And then keeping January the same, February the same.
March the same.
March the same, April same, May the same, and then whatever days we miss, we back it up on that June, uh, first, second, or, and, and, and third, somewhere in there.
Do you know, just, is RB's spring break the same?
Yes.
And as is their Christmas?
Correct.
I'm pretty sure it is, but I'm not a hundred percent.
And I've heard the same thing, and I think that has been a lot of feedback, is just coordinating the winter and spring breaks.
The long breaks.
Right. I like everything Mike's proposing, I'd like to just add one more proposal to that, is I'm noticing there's an HPT in January, and there's an HSI in February. And you said that February thirteenth is the day you are coordinating with the other district?
Right.
Can we combine it into one day and do everything again, like the HSI morning or afternoon, and HPT morning or afternoon for the one day?
We could do that, but we won't be aligned with them. They've already adopted their calendars.
No, meaning being aligned with, as far as they had institute for half the day?
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, just coordinating what their institute is.
Yeah, I, I didn't see that, Rachel. So you want to take the sixteenth, make that a full day?
Right.
Of school.
Of school, right?
I'm sorry, can you tell me the month?
January sixteenth. To, so to make that a full day, and then make the February thirteenth the HSI slash HPT.
Because you have that for all day, too. Or now, now we're, now we're messing with Valentine's Day.
No, Valentine's Day's on a Saturday next year.
Oh, what are we going to do?
Right, but if we have it on the thirteenth, then the, well, then we don't have.
That's when the parties are going to be.
How does that fit in with the semester?
Yeah, the trimester.
It's back four weeks. I mean, parent teacher conferences right now, that's the middle.
Just have it on the twelfth.
It's fine, we'll take that.
I like, I like the idea of combining the half days.
Uh, in January and February, that's my intention.
And that's, and then I don't, but the, the January sixteenth parent teacher conferences is in the middle of the trimester, because the second trimester ends February thirteenth. So you're basically having a full day of parent teacher conferences on the thirteenth.
Thirteenth of February?
And that's the day, the last, that's the last day of the trimester. So you're not having an opportunity for a mid-trimester conference.
Now, the, the thirteenth, we just had some invites.
I don't know what to buy me.
Parent conference, teachers, right? And that, and how, how many, uh, parents or teachers are involved in, in an invite?
Percentage.
Yeah, percentage.
Half, quarter.
You know, all of the teachers are involved with it, but I don't know, and I have, I see one teach, two teachers sitting in the audience. Can you tell me how many, um, parents you invited to conferences this past week, Friday?
From the teachers I've talked to, including, I saw, I've heard a range anywhere from four to maybe seven per class.
So like thirty percent probably?
Yeah.
So that's for end of trimester?
Middle.
So that would be like the February?
That would have been this week?
That would be last week.
That was, that Friday the fourteenth?
Yeah, Friday the fourteenth.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, so that, we, we had a half a day off then, and it was for like four, five students?
Or seven.
Or seven, up to seven. Okay. I'm just trying to get a handle on, on how, how this is all playing out.
I'm confused, though, why is February fourteenth the middle of the trimester this year, but next year the middle of the trimester will be almost a month earlier?
Because we moved it up on this particular calendar.
Right, but now that we're moving it to August twenty-seventh, where, where does that leave us?
We'll have to, you know what, we'll have to, i, if it's okay, I'd like to take your suggestions and draft another calendar.
Okay.
Because this is a computer program, you have to enter the days into the state program. So if you're off by a day, they won't approve it.
Right.
Or if you're, you know, above or over, so we have to have.
Draft six is a very low number. You need to have at least fourteen drafts.
Is there a reason why you want to start in the middle of the week?
Because they want the two institute days.
Yeah, but why can't you have a twenty-first, twenty-second?
And then start on the twenty-fifth?
Yeah. Or is there some not having a first, oh, fir, no, not having a complete week of school the first week? Does it matter?
I don't know.
I mean, from transition to summer and morning or whatever?
I don't know why I thought that.
Labor Day falls in, in there as well.
The following week.
Right. Well, that's true.
So you get, so you get one week, and then you get a day off?
Right. Yeah.
Labor Day?
You're going to school three days in August compared to eight, if you move it back a week.
All right, so, so we have the institute days on Thursday and Friday, and start fresh Monday. Right?
Any downside to that?
No, I think that sounds good.
If I could have your priorities on this, because some, that's what we were telling the teachers, you know, your priorities, we could have that, then we can make a draft.
Can we hash this out, and if it, I'll, I'll, I'll take a crack at it, and if people have a problem, they can speak up, that we go, uh, August twenty-first and August twenty-second are institute days. We start on Monday the twenty-fifth. Go through the whole week of August, the school days. September's okay. Uh, October, we're moving the third and the thirty-first to the tenth for a full day off.
And that's Columbus weekend, right?
Right, which would be that, that Friday morning would be school improvement institute, and then the afternoon would be parent teacher conference. Which makes the thirty-first a full day. And then November thirteenth and fourteenth would be school days. We're making the twenty-first a half day for school institute in the morning, and parent teacher conference in the afternoon.
Hang on, Michael, I'm sorry. So eleven thirteen and eleven fourteen, what did you say?
Uh, full school days. Then November twenty-first would be in the morning, uh, school improvement. Afternoon would be parent teacher conferences on the twenty-first. We go, uh, no school twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
What are twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth?
What are we doing?
You're just making those vacation days?
No, the twenty-first is, uh, school improvement and parent teacher conference.
Right, what's the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth?
No school.
You're just giving.
No, wait, wait, what about the twentieth?
I'm thinking that maybe there should be some learning on that day.
No, the teachers have to, in order for the teachers to get two days off, they have to have a consecutive fourteen-hour twenty.
Right.
They have to have fourteen hours and twenty minutes on two consecutive days.
So they have to work the, oh, they, that's why we had them working Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving.
Right.
I'm sorry, why are we having them work on Monday, Tuesday?
They need two consecutive days to get.
To get the twenty-sixth off.
Twenty-sixth off.
What do we do this year?
We did, we did do it. We had a.
But the problem was the parent teacher conferences on the Monday, right? Monday, you had a Monday parent teacher conference day with a Tuesday institute.
Oh, all right, all right.
So the, the issue from the staff is that the parents don't come, as many parents as they would like do not come on that Monday, because the whole week is off.
All right, then, then this is where I should shut up.
So they drop from normal four to seven to one to three, something like that?
These are the, these are the invite only, these are the required ones. The November conferences are required.
No, November's required, right?
That's what I said.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
November ones are required, but Steve was referring to the invite only's last.
Okay, and how, and how's that participation for the required ones? How many actually?
No, they have.
You're saying that that's required?
They're required, they're.
But the issue is that, that they have, I believe, that they have to reschedule some because people.
I'll rephrase. How many, what's the percentage of being rescheduled?
Are we talking about the November now?
November, the required one.
Personally, I haven't experienced two or three no-shows on occasion, but, I mean, I can speak for everybody else.
Survey of one, survey of one.
The February one, I'm, the February one, everybody showed up, for me at least.
That's good.
The February, the one who just appeared, everybody showed up.
That's the required one, that's a required one too.
All right, so what, so what are we doing?
So the invite only, that's good, I mean.
But let's, let's work on that, because it, it is very difficult to work out a fourteen-twenty time for conferences and a workday.
I don't even understand that at all.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't know that I want to.
Give me a.
Okay, a teacher workday is seven hours and ten minutes. In order for them to get that Wednesday off of Thanksgiving, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, they have to work, they have to make up a seven-hour and, a seven-hour, ten-minute day somewhere. So what we did this year for November thirteenth is they work, they work in the morning, then they have a half-day institute, so there's three hours, then they do three hours, three and a half hours of parent teacher conferences, so there's your seven hours. But actually, they're working in the, they, they teach, so it's like eight to eight, so Um, but actually, they're working in the, they, they teach, so it's like eight to eight, so they're working their twelve hours. And then on Friday, they did a half-day of Parent Teacher Conferences, so they picked up another three. So it was like eleven hour, eleven and a half hours on Thursday the thirteenth, and then on Friday, the fourteenth, they were picking up the other three hours to make it a fourteen-hour, twenty-minute workday.
Is this a contract?
Yes.
What, what do we do this year?
The same thing, we did Monday conferences.
Of Thanksgiving.
Monday was conference, right?
From.
They had kids all day, yeah, but they had kids in the morning, didn't they?
No, no.
No, conference was all day Monday, right?
No, they had eight hours of whatever.
And then the twenty-fifth was.
Institute day.
Why don't we just do that?
Can we just take, I was gonna ask, can we take the March Institute Day and throw it in November to alleviate that issue?
Why don't we just do what we did this year and have the twenty-fourth as Parent Teacher Conference? You, you go to that one. Take off for grandmas Monday night or whatever.
Why don't we just. Why don't we just push back the week and do the twentieth, Half School Improvement Day, Parent Teacher Con, or Half School Improvement Day, Parent Teacher Conferences in the evening of the twentieth, and then the morning of Friday, the twenty-first? So basically, the weeks look the same.
But then the kids come to school Monday, Tuesday.
Right, and I think you're kinda, you're.
No, 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 the kids come to school Thursday morning, and that's it.
You're, you're kinda putting parents out, I, I think, you're asking them to take off. I, I don't know.
What's your glasses on?
So, wait a second, we, we have a few parents here. Uh, would, would any like to weigh in on this issue?
But these are all parents, and again, we.
Excuse me?
I, 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 I like keeping that the Parent Teacher Conference on the twenty-fourth and the, in service on the twenty-fifth.
I agree with Mike, I, I think it's a better option, anything to avoid those half-days, they're really awful for everyone.
Right, and most people are gonna take that week off as vacation anyway.
So why don't we give, have her take all these thoughts and make draft seven?
Okay.
All right, and then I would like to propose that maybe, um, after the Finance Committee meeting, we schedule a special meeting for an hour, look at the calendar and see if we can pass it at that time.
Right, all right, well, can, you know.
But we don't have any solution to the, the issue raised by the teachers with regards to having to do the rescheduling for the parent.
Right.
For vacationing parents.
But.
What are they doing now?
Rescheduling, and they're doing them in the morning and they, wherever they.
I think we're gonna get that no matter what, the days.
I, I, I agree, I mean, if I have a, if I have a problem with, with, I'm not gonna wait till conference day, I'm, you know, I look on Power School and I call a teacher and, or send an email and say, can we have a phone call?
Yeah, but.
You know, I, you know, I, I, I don't see anyone, well, I, I, I hear the teachers complaining, I don't hear parents complaining.
Right, because they're being accommodated.
Right.
Right.
Right, and they, the teachers are raising the issue that this accommodations take up additional effort for them, and that's inconvenienced, you know.
And, and you know, they do prepare quite a bit for, for the, the conferences, at least the ones I've attended. They do a lot of work in preparing for that twenty-minute time slot to give you as much as they can.
Can they not do that over the phone?
Well, maybe, I don't wanna be over the phone.
We've, we've, we've just heard from one teacher just saying that there were only maybe two or three students involved in that situation.
In my experience, I've offered home conferences, but the parents insist on coming in after school for a conference.
I love the face-to-face.
Which is okay for me, but when it goes to the contract, it's not in the contract, but I have to do that. I personally do that, but I'm just representing both sides of the equation here. But with me, a phone conference would be fine. Parents will say, well, I'd really like to come in and see you, can I come in at three-thirty, from three-thirty to four? And that's just traditionally what has happened.
But do you get to pay for that, right?
No, that would be, that would be outside of my.
Well, that's something we can discuss as well, as far as if they need, for these rescheduling to fairly compensate them under the contract.
What?
So now, so we gotta be, we gotta be paying for these accommodations now?
I wanna pay them for.
Now, maybe you find, can we find the parents? Now, we're talking about payroll, we're paying a stipend because, for the accommodation.
Well, we should be, if, if we're not, and under the contract we should be, then we should be, I mean, it's, it's, I'm just trying to uphold the contract.
Well, I mean, but the teachers are trying to propose something to not have to deal with these accommodations and increasing the cost though, for our district.
Well, I've heard nothing about this has, has been cost-cutting, this is, this is not, it's not really about that.
Shouldn't it be about increasing costs?
No, 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 and I'm not suggesting we do that, we're talking about a lot of things to back off, but, but, but we gotta be realistic about it, you know, the community is unhappy, the stakeholders are unhappy with the current calendar, and we're trying to propose a compromise based upon what's in front of us. And I think Mike's done a really good job of tying it all together with what we have. You can't, you're not gonna have a perfect situation where everybody shows up to the conference and nobody cancels.
Right, but maybe that's the one thing that goes the other way.
But I'm telling you, you're probably, by, by sticking it in the middle like that, as a working, again, working parent perspective, in the middle of this, it's, you, it's much more difficult to take off in the middle of October third or whatever random day it is. You're more likely to have time off and be taking time off in that week anyway. So, I know it's not gonna be a perfect situation, I don't think, think any day we're gonna get, we're gonna get a hundred percent parent attendance.
So, um, I agree. And Michael, you agree, so there's three of us, I mean, is there a fourth?
Yeah, I agree, I think we can.
Okay, all right, then let's go ahead with this schedule.
Let's have her do draft seven and bring it to us.
Right.
We're not voting. Not voting.
Voting.
Well, we're giving guidance, we're giving guidance.
I'm supportive of a next for revision.
I think what we're doing is we're tabling this until we see a revision, and we're gonna meet again on, uh, uh, March fourth for a special meeting to deal with the, the next revision, revision seven, and hopefully it'll be final.
Yeah, I just wanna acknowledge, you know, when you, if we're compromising, then everyone's gotta give a little, and, you know, there was supposed to be, there was an effort to try to align a lot of these institute days and stuff like that, that's been thrown out the window.
Right.
It's out the window, you know, and so there's another.
No, not really, we kept, we kept one of the days that were, they were lining, the February thirteenth, that's in the proposal.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't think the parents are, are in the mood to compromise, I think.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's just that we just need to, when you say that we're compromising, let's just be honest, this is not a compromise, this is what is most convenient.
It seems like it's reverting pretty much back to what we had.
Yeah, right.
That's what it seems like.
And let's just be honest with that.
Sure.
So, I'm not trying to.
I would like to, I would like to wrap this up.
I mean, like, that is, it is what it is, I mean, I, I, no parent has complained to me about the, the, the current, you know, calendar. I understand trying to move it back in, in, in August, and I think we're trying to do that by starting on, on the twenty-fifth, I think it's a little bit of a compromise, but no, in, in general, I like it the way it is.
All right, can we, I guess we're just, need a motion to table this, so.
I'm making a motion that we table this and come back with option seven as we discussed.
Second.
All right.
Seven, eight, nine, ten.
All right, and we can just have a voice vote on this, all in favor?
I agree.
Any opposed?
Can we have like twelve versions at one time?
Sixteen.
Sixteen versions.
That was with the, the capital improvement projects and all that.
All right, our next item would be our board policies under review, board policies for final adoption from IASB Press eighty-two. May I have a motion to approve Policy two colon one oh five Ethics and Gift Ban and Policy three colon sixty Administrative Responsibility of the Building Principal?
I'll make that motion.
All right, I'm gonna take a roll, roll call vote on this. Randy Brockway?
Uh, yes.
Lisa Gaynor?
Aye.
David Kadama?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Arthur Perry?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
All right, um, the two board policies, uh, two board policies were, have passed. Next is the Crossing Guards Intergovernmental Agreement. We have two options here. One is the Village Proposal for a full fifty percent for the actual hourly salary and employment benefit cost of six crossing guards. And this will exclude administrative, supervisory, and equipment costs. And opt, um, and then Option B would be cost-sharing a lesser percent of thirty-three percent. May I have, um, and one thing I do wanna mention is that the intergovernmental agreement itself would still need to be reworked for just different language issues. So this would be, um, you know, this would be a vote subject to, um, a future presentation of the actual language for the Crossing Guard Intergovernmental Agreement. So again, I would first like to call for a motion that the Board of Education adopt Option A, which is the fifty percent option. Uh, would somebody like to move?
I would second that.
No, you have to make a mo.
You have to make a motion personally.
Make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, and.
So, this isn't, is, this is an agreement that the Village would accept because it's their proposal, the fifty percent option?
I assume so.
Well, why would they accept, accept any option?
Okay, what about the other option, the thirty-three?
They're already getting twenty-seven percent.
They're getting twenty-seven.
Except more.
So we're at thirty-three, we're, how much more?
So they'll, we think they'll, they'll, they'll accept anything as long as it's more than what they're now paying? Twenty-seven and a half. I'm, I'm just curious, 'cause.
Well, I mean.
We can't speak for them.
No, but we'll, we'll give them our, our offer.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, they can.
Well, that said, I still don't support any intergovernmental agreement, because again, I, I've heard a lot of the arguments, and, and they're, they're quite, you know, relevant, but I still think it's, the, you know, ultimately falls on the shoulders of the Village to carry this particular responsibility out. The other issue that I've said, I did talk to the Village President of Brookfield, Kit Ketchmark, and he said he wouldn't even broach the topic. He thinks that for Brookfield, they will, you know, the Village will pay for the, the, um, the, the crossing guards there, because he feels the same way, that it's the, the responsibility of the Village. And that's, also brings up an interesting issue of inequity as far as tax money concerns, simply because, since I'm a Brookfield resident, I pay property tax to the Village of Brookfield, which is in turn funding crossing guards for my neighborhood. But I'm also paying taxes to District Ninety-Six, which is going to, if, if any of these motions carry, will lead us into paying for Village Riverside crossing guards as well. So I, I feel like, as a taxpayer, I'm kind of double-paying, and I, I have an issue with that, so I just thought I'd point that out, thanks.
Um, I only just like to, addressing your first point about whose responsibility it is, and again, I don't know, um, you know, if you were here, whether we discussed this last time, but the law, um, the law provides that either the municipality or the school district may, neither is required, so.
Yep, I understand that, and I understand that there are other, there is, we look, you guys provided information that other school districts are doing this, fair enough, I, I don't, I still don't agree with it.
Yeah, okay.
The Forest, Forest Park District is providing a fifty-fifty with their local police department, and I believe Oak Park, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's a hundred percent by the school district and zero percent by the police department.
Yeah, there, I mean, it's all over the map, but the, again, the codes, I mean, we've at least established that the municipal code and the school codes do provide, it's for some measure of, of jointly doing this responsibility, or assuming it, and part of the reason, um, some of us might be willing to support a lesser share than fifty percent, there's probably a lot of reasons, but, you know, uh, uh, is because other municipalities are, um, you know, sheltering this burden alone, or.
I would, I would just like to comment that, I appreciate, uh, President Mary Rose Mandia working closely with President Sells and his administration on this. It is, um, a whole lot different than it was a few years ago, when, uh, the Village and the Board were really at loggerheads over this issue. So I think that we've come a long way, and I think that we should, um, perhaps make an effort to, uh, to do more here, and the fifty percent proposal, I think, is imminently fair.
All right, um, thank you. Are we ready to vote on, on the fifty, you know, I'm gonna offer up, um, you know, unless the fifty percent passes, I'm gonna offer up two motions.
And what's the, can you remind the audience, what the dollar, what the dollar amount increase to our budget, to our expense line will be?
Could go with that. I believe that if, uh, looking at.
It's like a twenty thousand dollar increase.
If we go with, twenty-two thousand, nine forty-nine, if we go with the fifty percent, um.
That's an increase?
It would be twenty-two thousand, if we go with the thirty-three percent, it's ten thousand.
And I, I just acknowledge that, you know, based on our tax levy vote, we're going with flat tax levy, we're looking for savings, and I'm still looking to hopefully realize those savings at some point, before we start increasing, you know, I'd like to see it before we start increasing our expense lines, because we're, that's, that's a, a directive that we gave to our, our Director of Finance to, you know, look at our expenditures, so.
No, and I, I, I agree with you there. All right, just to repeat the motion, um, that's on the floor. This would be, um, moving that the Board of Education adopt an intergovernmental agreement, specific language to be agreed, between Riverside School District Ninety-Six and the Village of Riverside, in which the school district agrees to reimburse the Village of Riverside for seasonal school crossing guards, excluding administrative, supervisory, and equipment costs. The reimbursement percentage will be fifty percent for the actual hourly salary and employee benefit cost, so, uh, may we have a roll call vote in support of the fifty percent? Mr. Perry?
No.
Mrs. Morella?
No.
Mrs. Gaynor?
No.
Mr. Brockway?
Aye.
Mr. Kadama?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
No.
Ms. Mandia?
No.
Um, may I have, um, a, a motion for Option B, which should be the intergovernmental agreement, uh, with a reimbursement percentage of thirty-three percent on an annual basis for the actual hourly salary and employment benefit cost.
I'll make that motion.
Somebody'd like to second it?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Mr. O'Brien?
No.
Mrs. Morella?
No.
Mrs. Gaynor?
No.
Mr. Brockway?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Kadama?
No.
Ms. Mandia?
Aye. That didn't pass either. May I have an Option C?
Twenty, twenty-seven point five? Uh-oh, what if I say no?
What if we did less than twenty-seven percent no?
Well, that would.
Twenty-seven percent is where.
Well, we're currently.
Well, we're currently on the hook for it, right? That I'm, and I'm struggling with it, and we're talking about equity, um, I'm looking at North Riverside doesn't ask for a dime. What would be equitable for us is to pay, and I understand there's, with Ames School, that there's only one possible beneficiary to, for that crossing guard. Shouldn't we be paying twenty-seven percent of what North Riverside is paying? Wouldn't that be the right thing to do?
Right.
And therefore, for Brookfield too.
Right, right, and as I understand, the, it was represented to us, and I can't verify this, is that there's no, um, Brookfield-funded, um, crossing guards for District Ninety-Six?
That's not true.
That's not true, then why isn't it on this list? We're, that was the representation made, I believe, at the, it was the last meeting or the meeting before.
Yeah, it was raised before too.
Because nobody's provided me with the information, but you know, the other thing is that this is the agreement that is before the Board, what may be coming in the future, you know, maybe coming in the future, and at that time, I think Ben Sells said that, you know, maybe if they combine things, they'll look to joint administration of the three. Uh, you know, and we look at the whole thing, and, you know, but this is the one that's before.
Us.
This is before us at this time, this agreement does go, it doesn't go into perpetuity, you can cancel it with sixty days, I mean, it doesn't go on forever. So, and I, I think that's the spirit, we, we have been funding it to the tune of about twenty-seven percent a year, and this just memorializes it in terms of a specific crossing guard, you know, IGA, and.
So ju, just for the record, the, Brookfield provides two crossing guards, one at the train tracks at Hollywood Crossing, and the other one's at Hollywood and Washington, which is very close to Hollywood School, although it's around the corner, it's not.
Which is like Riley Community Center, right?
Riley Community House, yeah.
And again, just to, again, just to remind everybody, the RB is paying for a third of the crossing guard at First Avenue, and, and if for some reason, you know, Brookfield comes to us and said we'd like this to be done, I would probably look to, or, you know, suggest they look to RB to cost-share that as well. You know, I'm just suggesting that, I mean, but they don't, you said they don't, not interested in that at this time.
Yeah, I, if Brookfield was interested in participating, we should obviously entertain that, just like we would for North Riverside and Riverside, that's all, that's one thing that I'm saying. I still think the other thing, which is that.
Yeah, and part of the reason I'm supporting this at less than the fifty percent is in case that some days people do ask us, and we decide that it's the right thing to do, but this, this is what's before us now, it is something that can be canceled, um, you know, we can terminate, but it, it does at least, um, um, uh, you know, put, put a, a official nature to what we're already doing in terms of an IGA.
So, Mary Rose, do we have the option to, to vote again and, and to, to, to agree at twenty-seven or to say no?
It's a different motion.
I would, I would say that that's, that has not been part of the discussion up to this point.
I, again, we're making a proposal, you know, we're making, um, we're discussing it now, the whole, the, of ratifying an IGA.
All right, well, let's quit wasting our time and figure out who's gonna accept what before we can go on. It looks like Mary Rose and Randy will accept thirty, and we're from twenty-seven point one to, to thirty-three percent. Does, do any of us wanna move off and support twenty-eight, twenty-nine, or thirty? I don't. Does, do any of us want to move off and support 28, 29, or 30? I don't. I'm not going to change my vote. I'll keep it at 27.
Well, the issue is because we want to enter into an intergovernmental agreement at all. Do we, that's what I'm.
Well, I, I.
That's the best.
Don't you think that's the best practice?
I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mary Rose, but I do believe that the spirit was, if we have some kind of arrangement with Village Riverside, having it under an intergovernmental agreement is a good idea. And I agree with that.
And I agree with that.
I agree with that in principle, in general. Just this particular area is not something that I, I agree with, so.
Let me ask you.
Well, I don't think you would disagree with the agreement. You disagree with paying for it.
Yes.
So if we all agree that we should pay for it, you agree there should be an agreement.
Correct. And we are paying for it. We are paying.
Excuse me?
I mean, are you suggesting we stop paying for it entirely?
I don't.
Is anyone, no, I'm saying.
Well, I would suggest we.
We know where you're at.
And we have at least one person that says no. I mean, on principle, you would say no, right?
Right, but would you, I'll support 27%. We put it in the memorandum.
I support that there should be some financial participation, you know. For me, it's, it's about, you know, budget, you know, looking at the big, at the big picture and trying to manage our expenditures and things like that, that this, right now, I'm, you know.
So you're okay with not saving 18,000?
You know, representing the board, I, I'm watching Springfield. And I'm, I'm waiting and watching for whether or not they're going to introduce legislation that's going to do a cost shift for the pension reform. And so that's, that's a big bogey out there. I mean, if they come in with some of the proposals they're talking about, increasing our expenditures by $350,000 every, every year, I mean, that's something that is in the back of my mind and I'm, and I'm closely watching.
Well, and I would, I would agree with that, that thinking. And I would also say that if pension reform doesn't go that way, or we get to a point where we can afford more of the crossing guards, we should address it then. But for now, I think there's too many unknowns and I'm good with where we are. I agree with Lisa. I have one thing I want to point out, too. 27% is what we're currently sharing. That's going to be, it's going to change. I don't know what the percentage would be because the high school is going to start contributing to the one at First Avenue and Forest. Did we nail down what that exact percentage will be after their contribution is thrown into the pot? It should be 133, 10 at the end. 133. No, 100% for Ames, 33 would be us, RB, Village.
I don't know that I'm concerned with what RB's paying. I'm concerned with what we're paying.
No, but what I'm saying, she's looking at, it says 50. I'm looking at 27% is the current rate, meaning that it's going to change next year because the high schools are also going to throw in money into the pot. Right, so just add the 11, the 3800 and the 11, 5, 1100, and that would get you your number. Because the, see the 33 over there? In the, in the column that says 50, 33, 50, 50, 50, 50? Okay, so if you take 100 and the 10 and the 33, that's the new number.
So I would just comment that I'm, I'm disappointed in what I'm hearing from, from a majority of the board on this issue. I think that it's not in the spirit of cooperation that the city, or, excuse me, I'm speaking.
No, we're trying to figure this out. I'm sorry.
Well, I think we're, you're not, we're, we're not sharing in the spirit and in the, in the cost of protecting the kids. And this is so important. I'm just disappointed that it's come down to decisions of $5,000 and worrying about pension reform and having all these auxiliary issues come up. It's, I would say this is probably the low points of my participation on the board at this point, to, to hear this.
I, I don't want to suggest that we don't think public safety is important, because I, I definitely think it's important. However, sometimes you have to draw the line somewhere. We have the safety of the children inside our schools and the perimeters of our schools that we need to focus on and need to, it's cost us dearly, and that's what our focus and priority should be. And we're obviously have had a hard time doing just that. We don't ask the village to participate and help us pay with those kind of financial burdens. So even though, yes, it says, the language does say, and then it can be customary to pay for that, I think what we're saying is, you know, and I said this to you before the meeting, this is a really bad time for us, because we have so much unknown now with not only pension reform, but just as far as Common Core implementation, not to mention, this is a deal that was struck when none of us were on the board. I would have never struck this deal. It's bizarre how it's played out. It's inequitable from, from not only the, who we're paying, because we're not paying North Riverside, we're not paying Brookfield, and it's inequitable as far as who's contributing. Why should we be the one to contribute? Because now we're starting to say, well, everybody who uses a crossing guard, let's share, shift the, share the burden. So there's too many, I just think this is a bad.
The only thing I want to, want to say about the inequities, the approach that I'm taking on this is that we've picked the amount that we want to share. How the village gets the other 63 or 66%, you know, is their business, you know. In other words, I don't want to get into the conversation about inequities. I just want to say is, I'm willing to say a third, you know, not 50% or, you know, 40%. I'm willing to say a third. And maybe if the village has other ideas of how they want to share it, that's fine, or where they want to get it from, but, you know, but we, you know, we, you know, I think in principle, I've decided I want, we want crossing guards.
Why should we give it to the Riverside? I agree. Our crossing guard is great, but why to Riverside? Why to not North Riverside?
Because they haven't asked. They haven't asked.
For all intents.
That's not a good reason.
Well, it is.
Because they would have said, oh, okay.
They may come in and ask, and that's, they may come in and ask.
Listen to this video.
For all intents and purposes.
They already have, actually.
Most of our children are being served by these, the majority are being served by the Riverside crossing guards, okay? There's, there's one crossing guard on, on North Riverside, and there's two, I understand, on, in Brookfield. But the other six, and it is the vast majority, are serving District 96 students, almost exclusively.
There's three in North Riverside.
Yeah. You know, again, I think, I think, I think the President of North Riverside, you know, has suggested it. When they come up with a proposal, you know, we'll take a look at it at that time. If they, if they do, and at that time, we can decide to cancel this one, and as I said, a lot of things can be done if people do it jointly. This is mainly memorializing the agreement that, you know, or making official what we are already doing. And I think you just have to ask yourself in principle, do you want crossing guards and to what degree do you want to pay for them, if, with, with this particular proposal? You know, I think that's what's before us, and that's what I'd like to, you know, vote on. Do we want to at least, you know, I'd like to round it off at 30 rather than 27. But can we have a motion to, you know, you know, move 30, move to 30%?
Is that the easiest way for, for them to, to do this, is with some percentage? I mean, right now, it looks like our, our expected budget for 2014, 15, under our current arrangement, would be $23,425?
David, the way it has been currently is we pay for certain percentages of certain guards. We pay, and I think I do have it on the sheet.
You have it.
It was 18,469.
You know, but it was 50%, what is it here?
It's 100% of Ames, 50% of First Avenue and Forest, and 10% of Long Common Railroad Track.
Right. And, and, I mean, so that's the way it's been. We've been being built. And they've asked just to go a straight percentage across the board, and they said 50, recognizing that 50% isn't going to pass, you know, let's look at something else.
Look, everyone has their philosophical reasons why they're for, for, against it. You know, David brings up pension, Rachel brought up the thing that, that Riverside isn't helping us fund here. And, you know, Randy's, it's one of his low points serving on the board, for me, was being elected to the board and being here at 10:40 discussing this, but.
Is your low point?
Because we, we need to move on. You know, we, we, are we, just going to, it, it, I'm not moving off 27%. I'm saying that 27% and I'll approve the memorandum of understanding. You guys got to get two more votes. I don't know where you're going to get them.
So do you want to make that motion?
Make the motion.
I make a motion that we, we keep it at 27% and approve a memorandum, memorandum of understanding.
But is that different than a?
Which is current expenses.
Intergovernmental agreements is, are the two the same? Intergovernmental agreements?
Yeah, you know what, well, you know what, let's do the, whatever the right paperwork is going to be to be agreed.
We should, if we, if this passes, we should have an intergovernmental agreement documenting whatever it is.
Mary Rose has put a lot of effort into this intergovernmental agreement.
All right, so. Well, yes, you have. A motion was, was made, and I'm seconding the motion.
Okay.
All right. May we have a roll call vote, please, for an intergovernmental agreement at 27%?
Current level.
Current level. Randy Brockway?
I'll abstain.
Lisa Gaynor?
Aye.
David Kadama?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Arthur Perry?
No.
Mary Rose Mangia? Aye. Right. Well, we've approved a 27% intergovernmental agreement.
It's a proposal, right?
It's a proposal. It's a counterproposal.
Send it all into the village.
And we'll see where that goes. All right. Sorry, anyway, thanks. Let's move on. Oh, this is an appointment of the Board Secretary, which is, what's the motion here?
I move that the Board approve or not approve the, I approve. I moved that the Board, sorry, I'm reading verbatim. Approve the appointment of Juanita Patton as Board of Education Secretary at full-time status effective February 19, 2014.
Second.
All right. You want to call the roll? Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Lisa Gaynor?
Aye.
David Kadama?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Arthur Perry?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mangia?
Aye.
All right. Now we can get to new business discussion items. The technology infrastructure request for qualifications. And I guess, Mike, this is how we move forward from our technology forum and tonight's presentation.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I guess, direction as far as what we should do if we bring this up for discussion next week, or if we have to vote on it, or we come, come back at it, but.
What are you saying, next week?
Next month. I'm sorry.
Forgotten the habit.
I'm sorry.
Meeting every week, yeah.
I don't know, next board meeting, here's what I'd like to do. I think we need to put out an RFP or RFQ, and I use RFP, RFQ simultaneously, that focuses really on, on six issues. Speed, hosting servers offsite, email, help desk, active directory, and disaster backup. That's where I think we need to focus our RFP and RFQ on. What we need to do is we need, from our, our technology forum, is, if we agree on these six items, maybe we add a few, is that members of the community have come forward to say they would be more than willing to volunteer their time and expertise in putting together this RFP to get, to, to send out. And so I, I think maybe over the next month, we work with Matt Alanius, Dr. Sharma Lewis, Zach Zayed, and members of the community who are at the tech, of tech forum to write this RFP, get it approved, and put it out for, for bid, put it out for approval and get quotes.
All right. I guess this would be a matter, then, of giving Bob the direction, or?
I, yeah, that's what I'm.
David, is that the, the right thing? We would be giving?
What do you think we need to do?
To Bob the direction to form a, a group to write an RFQ?
Right. That, that okay with everybody?
That works. We don't have to vote. We don't have to do anything.
Right, that, that would come back, hopefully by next board meeting.
With the RFQ.
With the RFP, RFQ, you know, in its wholly final form, ready to go and, and put out.
So you don't know if you're going to do RFP or RFQ at this point?
Well, if, if you're going to do an R.
He clearly doesn't know the difference. He's using them simultaneously.
Yeah, if you got.
Interqualification. One includes price and one does not.
Well, yeah, RFQ is more, more general. There's more flexibility in what they offer.
Open to discuss. What, what do you guys want?
Because you're looking at six, six specific items that you want to be addressed, you know. Because we were talking about, you know, like, even today, goes, well, you know, you could deal with the, the data backup, or the, you know, we could just do, do that with the LineaCup.
Right.
Or anything like that. Is that something we would entertain?
I want flexibility.
I want flexibility, too, but I don't necessarily think we want to do six totally separate things, do we? I mean, can we structure an RFQ that has all six elements, but asking for a proposal on all or part of those?
Yeah.
Is that a possibility?
And that's kind of how we did the, the bid process for, like, the construction. It's like, okay, here it is. You can bid on, some people bid on certain schools. Some bid, bid it on all schools, and so.
Can our experts tell us, or also give us advice on the right way to go about this?
Yeah, I, I think we want to structure it right, that we have that option.
That flexibility.
If someone wants to bid on all of it, they can. If they want to bid on part of it, they can.
I, I would, I would just suggest that we ask for a unit cost for each of the six by the, the bidders or the qualifiers. That way, we, we have the percentages and so forth. We've, we've got it broken out if we decide to, to split it up. Okay. Is that okay?
Yeah, could you remind me, you said the six. Go ahead, go through.
Speed?
Uh-huh.
Hosting servers offsite?
Yeah.
So that's.
Email?
Uh-huh.
Help desk?
Help desk, yep.
Active directory?
Active directory.
Directory.
And disaster backup.
Disaster backup. I said the data backup, disaster backup.
Right. And it may grow to another, I think, depending on what we talk to members of the community.
Twelve things, yeah.
Not the way we operate. But we try and come back by the March board meeting with, you know, our, our best RFP or RFQ, whatever we're going to call it, it gives us flexibility to get pricing on the whole package or individually.
Okay.
That make sense?
Go to that.
Now, final piece of the puzzle, that if we're going through all this, right, and I think we have the bandwidth that we currently have with Superintendent, Director of Finance Operations, and members of the community. We go, okay, sounds good, and in March, we approve it, and it, and it goes out for bid. Now we have to come back and we have to make a decision. Who on this board or in this administration has the capacity to look over the final bids that people bid, bid out and say, that's the way you should go. We're going to put it on our superintendent? Are we going to put it on Matt Alanius? Are we going to put it on, on ourselves? What I believe we should do is that we look and, hopefully hire sometime in April, you know, but by that time, we look to hire a Director of Technology. You know, Vern's replacement, but I know we posted it as a Director of Innovation and Instruction, that we look to hire that person. Now, I know we said the last time when we talked about it, well, I don't know if we want to hire that person or not. I think after the technology forum, that the direction we go is that, you know, we clearly need a Director of Technology.
But do we have a job description? I mean, we haven't had a lot of conversations.
I was hoping, you know what, I'm hoping that our, maybe our technology experts would help us, give us advice on what the right qualifications ought to be.
We did post that, we did post that job description about a month ago.
But that's, that's for the instructional.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's the question. Do we need somebody who leans instructional or somebody more?
I finished what you were going to say.
It's both. It was both on that.
Right, I look at it.
But only one job.
Only one job.
But with both descriptions.
Because, look, I, I, I was right there with you guys, that we're, we're looking at this, saying, well, we have to wait to see what we need. You know, what, do we need someone more in the curriculum side? Do we need someone more on the technology side? Or do we even need somebody at, at all? My belief is that after, you know, this whole process, is that I think we need someone with like a 60, 40, 70, 30 skill set, more towards infrastructure and less on curriculum. That's, that's my opinion.
I, I agree with that. And in fact, I would say, you're going to be talking to some of these.
I do.
People, these technological people, as far as to get assistance with the RFP, RFQ. I know that there's been a couple offers to help with the job description as well. And why not put in front of them this job description and just let them look at it and get their feedback?
Right, because.
Because they can offer that as well.
Well, if there's a job description out there, why don't we look at the current job description? Right, right, using that one as a standard. And have them reflect on what.
Right. Look, you know, I, I, with, with the curriculum, we already have Liz Whaley, and I, I'm sorry, I forget the other.
Paula.
Paula, you know, to, and Brian to handle that curriculum aspect of, okay. I'm not saying with this person coming, it has to have a whole box and wire approach. To me, that's what we have Matt for, for, for the box and. to me, that's what we have Matt for, for the box and wires. I think we need someone who can, who can help us make the decision, which proposal, which way to go, and then manage it.
You have to manage, you have to manage your vendor, you absolutely have to.
Well, we need someone, what I heard, even tonight, was that we need someone in-house that has ownership of this.
Right.
And is gonna hold, who can talk the language, who can, who can hold the vendors accountable.
And who can manage the contracts and the service level agreements, and make sure that whatever it is that they're promising in the service level actually gets...
And it aligns with the needs of the district.
The role changes depending on the time of year.
Well, and also, if we end up with one person doing all six things, does that change the scope of what we need inside? Because they're gonna, they might be doing more outside.
You know, my gathering from what, listening tonight, even though my eyes crossed, is that we still need somebody inside to handle all of the local things regardless of we have outsourcing it.
I don't disagree with that, what I wonder is how deep and how many? How deep the job description needs to be, meaning, does it need to be director level or not, and how many?
Well...
I mean, I don't mean how many, meaning, do we need Matt plus someone, do we need our current structure plus one, or do we need a different structure? I think we definitely need a director. And I think that that sometimes might, we might need administrative recommendations as well. Right.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I think Dr. Sharma Lewis had this recommendation several months ago, right, to hire somebody and have that person help us review RFPs, RFQs, whatever we're gonna do, and then move forward with that. So, I think that's a great suggestion, but from what I'm gathering, what I heard tonight, is that we need somebody at a director level technology, and let that person review all the bids, or the RFQs that come in, sorry, proposals that come in, and also potentially make a recommendation to us, what our staffing needs may be to follow.
I agree.
Yeah, I'd also like to think that our six or seven experts can help us with that too.
You know, we've, we've just, we've just lost somebody at the director level, and we, I think, we, earlier in the discussion, we were talking about, we really need a hands-on manager. Now, I, I don't want us to forget that, I think that we really do need somebody that's hands-on and managing, and he's working closely, and he's not up in a director level seat, because we just haven't had good experience with that.
Well, I think we are talking about a hands-on director.
But, I'll, I'm not sure if this is where Randy was going, but I felt that there was frustrations about the way we were purchasing cap, our technology, and how it was, or was not, specifically, was not being incorporated into the curriculum. You know, we have all this, we have this inventory, how's it being used, and stuff like that, so I believe that there is a need for someone who's with the technology background, who is able to effectively work with staff, work with the curriculum, to incorporate, to make that curriculum more robust, and more, with greater rigor.
I think there probably is as well, what I'd like to start is, what are our needs with the infrastructure, and look at this instructional component down the road, and maybe, in that case, maybe we work with a consultant to help us with some of that, I don't know, but I just see, see this first, this...
As a first step?
I see this as a first step, let's see...
So, the consultant is a first step?
No.
Well, no, instructional, maybe, but I see as a first step, just getting the infrastructure in place, with that hiring.
And does that have to be at a director level?
Right.
I don't know, I really don't, but again, I, you know, I'd like to think that we've assembled a lot of experts, and we're looking at resumes, and let's see, see what we get. I just wonder if you're really gonna get, I mean, I don't know what's out there, I'm not an expert in this, I just wonder if you're gonna get an infrastructure expert and an instructional expert in the same package, I think they're probably two separate disciplines.
I think we need, I think we need that hybrid, and I don't think we should rule out some of the talent that is already within the district.
What do you think, are you still hacked off at the 27 percent?
No, I'm fine, totally fine.
What, what do you think?
I think we need that guy from Bloomington.
I...
Yeah, maybe we should just go hire him, yeah. Sitting there.
No.
What you need is an educator who became a technology person.
That's what that guy was, he was a teacher.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I think the idea of candidate would be someone who had a professional background in the private world, became an educator, and has worked their way up to a technology position, and we, you know, I think it's someone kind of at that director level, because I, you know, and, you know, we already have the head count there with Vern, I mean...
Yeah, if they could, if they could bring that combination of skills, then, then we're talking director level, that's what, that's, I believe.
We're talking academic and director combo.
And technology, in that, in that technical.
That's a different conversation than just a director of technology, I think.
Right.
Because that's...
We need the hybrid, I think, you know, let's...
It services two purposes, if you can, like I said, if I'm the right person.
I say, as a first step, we should be, we should be looking for that, look for the hybrid, you know, go pie in the sky, you know, try to get your ideal.
I agree with you there, the one disappointment is that this person won't be here to help us to, you know, develop the RFQ, because they're gonna have to basically live with the results, whatever comes back, and if we did it wrong...
Right, but, but maybe, you know, look, we're talking to do an RFQ in March, and get that ready, and then maybe by April or May, we have this person hired to help us make the decision. Because, I mean, I'm looking, we're not adding staff here, we're not, this is Vern's position, whatever we call it, you know, we're replacing somebody we've lost.
Okay.
Right, but the direct, now, so we're gonna move forward with drafting this RFP, RFQ, or, you know, just, but giving us as much flexibility as possible.
Yeah, we're kind of running, the way I see it, I think we're kind of running two tracks here, track number one, moving ahead with our six issues, to draft the RFQ with as much flexibility, I think that, between board members, Zach, Dr. Sharma Lewis, and community volunteers, I think we can get that to where we want it to be. So, we're, you know, getting that, hopefully by March, we move on it, and submit it, but at the same time, we're, we've already had, posted that position for, I look at, Director of what, Innovation and Instruction, is that we're looking for that person who has a, maybe a little bit of private background, you know, in the private sector, then moved into education, then moved into technology, that we bring them in maybe at the director level, if that person exists.
Yeah.
Chris is, you know, I know you're not raising your hand there, but as one community volunteer, you have any comments to make?
You have time on your side, you can take advantage of the fact that you have a number of community members who are going to assist in the development of the RFQ, RFP, and there can be a parallel track with the same people to help you identify what the job description may be of the individual that you're gonna want to bring in-house. Mike makes a good point, yeah, it probably would be good to have somebody on staff already who could take ownership of the project and say, yes, this is, this is the way we want to go, there's a certain comfort level in that. I would just maybe suggest, you've been patient going through this process, I would suggest continuing to have that patient perspective, let the members in the community who have subject matter expertise in this area come up with a set of recommendations for you. I understand the anxiety, and the need to move forward and get it done, there's other things you need to consider, and you need to, you need to take care of, but this is a situation where the sky is not falling, the river is not rising, so take advantage of the time, that's just my suggestion.
All right, thank you, Chris. All right, thank you very much.
So, are we okay with the track that we're pursuing here?
Yes.
I'm good.
Yeah, and who, are you gonna work with Zach and Dr. Sharma Lewis?
Yes, I think what the next thing to do is probably email with some dates that we want to meet, probably late afternoon, to do it, for people at the Technology Forum who kind of, Forum who kind of came forward and volunteered their time, is that we say, we're gonna, we're gonna meet here, can you meet with us? No, I can't, but, you know, here's some sample documents we've used in the past, and put together that proposal, put it back out to people, so they can look at it, fine tune it, and then it's gotta go to our lawyer.
Okay. All right, so we have our direction, and, you know, our, at least the members of our, key members of the group who are here, who are gonna spearhead this, and I think we can move on. All right, next is the 2013-2014 calendar, this would be just finalizing where we are with emergency days.
We said we weren't gonna take action until April, we wanted to wait till the winter season was over, but a couple comments had come back about possibly looking at Institute Day, now that we have four emergency days we've used, we used January 6th and 7th, and then 27th and 28th. So, if you look at our calendar right now, we have April 28th is our, is a Monday, it's an Institute Day, some suggestions came back using that day as a student attendance day, and then moving it, the Institute Day on Wednesday, January, June 11th, so we would take Institute Day, which is the 28th, as one emergency day, then our second emergency day would be June 6th, our third emergency day would be June 9th, and our fourth emergency day would be Tuesday, June 10th, so that would be the last day of student attendance. If we didn't take that Institute Day as a student attendance day, and left it as is, where students didn't come to school, and teachers had their professional development, then our last day of student attendance would be June 11th. And right now, graduation is scheduled for June 10th?
11.
11, June 11th, so right now, graduation is scheduled for June 11th, so those are the two options, I've heard feedback on both, and Elisa's on the committee, working with some Hauser staff and parents for graduation, so that's been confirmed for the 11th at the auditorium.
But, but June 11th could stay June 11th, even if we put the Institute Day on June 11th, I mean, I would think, I don't, I mean, people would not go to, the eighth graders wouldn't go to school anyway, they're just coming back to graduate. We have no flexibility to move graduation to Tuesday night, the town hall, where the post-party happens, is not available, so thus...
Is that their bust?
It's Wednesday, or...
Forget it.
I like your idea, Bhavna, of taking that one Institute Day, making it the student attendance day, and then moving the Institute Day to after, after school, or after it's out.
Right, on June 11th, then it would just be June 11th.
June 11th, yes.
So, staff would come back, or, excuse me, staff would stay on the 11th.
Right. So, what do you need from us today to bring this back next month for a vote?
Yes, what is your recommendation, and do we vote on it next month, because we'll be voting on the other calendar next month, or do we wait until April, like we originally decided in January, waiting until the weather, in case we have another snow day, or a flood day, or...
I'm sorry.
I don't know, I don't, I don't have a preference myself, but...
I don't either, whatever.
Whatever you, I mean, I'll, I'll take the recommendation from the group.
I'd like to do it in March, just to get it off our plates.
March?
Oh, vote.
So, we'll do both, we'll try to do both calendars at the special meeting in March.
Yep, and then if somehow we, you know, have a bit of another day, then we gotta tail one.
Yeah, we'll know that, you've just got to...
Then we'll hash it out, that's fine, I think we'll get it done in March.
All right.
And the recommendation is to have school on Institute Day, and then the 6th, 9th, and 10th would be student attendance day, and then Institute Day would be moved to June 11th.
Graduation stays on the 11th.
And graduation stays at June 11th.
Yeah.
But students would not be in attendance on the 11th.
Correct.
Okay.
What's the plans right now for the 28th on Institute Day? Were you bringing...
We were gonna be doing Common Core stuff.
So, it might be more relevant in the school year.
It's our staff, right, it would be relevant on the 28th, but we'll make it work for the 11th, and do some summer work.
All right, okay, so again, we'll be attempting to vote on two calendars at the special meeting on the 4th. The next one is, I'm just looking for an update on when, you know, it is getting late, so I'd rather not have a big discussion on this, but the purchase and contract superintendent spending limit, when was this gonna show up on, was it a policy committee agenda, that we were gonna take this up again?
I don't know, I have... It wasn't, it wasn't on my, like, near-term calendar.
I believe we're trying to get this done by the end of the school year, by June, the current limit was 25,000, and I think we had talked about maybe going down to 15,000.
Uh-huh.
Or other variations thereof.
So, do you want, just put it on the March or April agenda?
Yep, for policy, yes.
March.
March.
March agenda, okay.
All right.
And we'll have discussion then.
All right. All right.
Or, you know, I say that, but, you know, I got, it's a tight, you know, these, these policy committees, it's only an hour and 15 minutes.
And we've got the hiring, we've got the hiring, that's coming up in March.
So, priority, you know, I would say, you have to pick one or the other, the working committee, the hiring process, or this...
I think the hiring and the superintendent spending limit should take priority, the updates can wait a month, we can wait till April, May, we'll catch up over the summer if we need be, if it slows down, but I think these are very important issues, we should get them going.
So, that'd be the first agenda item, our policy meeting?
I would just say that as the only agenda.
Wow, you really think we'll talk that much about it?
Well, if you can pick out a few that are...
Yeah, those two, if you put those two on, and we'll be an hour discussion.
Because, you know, if we have extra time, I'd like to update you guys on the seal carry.
All right.
Very good.
All right, so these will both go on the March agenda, the hiring and...
So, no updates on the agenda, no first readings of the...
Correct.
I don't know, I'm lost.
We only have, I mean, my suggestion would be, just to finish them, we only have four, right?
Why don't you just put them on the agenda?
You can put them there, and if we can get to them...
And do both, I mean, I think we could do the, both, the hiring and the spending limit, and the four.
Well, it doesn't hurt to put them on the agenda, but...
They don't get to it, they don't get to it.
But, all right, just note that the future meeting dates are listed on the agenda, and I guess we've added one for a special meeting on the 4th, to do two calendars.
From the March, policy and regular business meeting, it's one day later.
Day later, as previously discussed. All right, I am gonna call for a motion to enter into closed session for the purpose of discussing, I don't have that little blurb that I have to read here, anybody got it?
You did it from last month.
I don't have it on this one. Here, I can just pull it up. Is it on the...
Some of this one's agenda.
Oh, you know what, I always have it in here, always have last one's agenda, all righty.
I thought you had it memorized.
Not yet, ah, here it is, enter into the closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, or legal counsel for the district, including hearing, testimony on a complaint, laws against an employee, or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. May I have a motion to, to enter into closed session?
So, move, second.
All right, we have to do a roll call vote.
Randy Brockway.
Aye.
Lisa Gaynor.
Aye.
David Kadama.
Aye.
Rachel Morella.